Test 1, 2, 3.
Good morning.
I have an unidentified caller on the line. Can you please identify yourself?
Yes, this is Pima County Attorney Laura Conover.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning. Want to call to order the Board of Supervisors meeting for May 17, 2022. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Christie.
Here.
Supervisor Gruhova.
Here.
Supervisor Heinz. Supervisor Heinz. Supervisor Scott.
Good morning, I'm here.
Chair Bronson.
Here. And for the record Supervisor Scott is joining us remotely and with that please rise for the pledge of allegiance to be offered today by Supervisor Christie.
Please join me in the pledge to our flag.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we're in for a special treat. The land acknowledgement statement today will be read by Michael Spotted Wulp. He is the Finance Director for the Tucson Indian Center and he will also play an honor song at today's meeting.
Thank you. On behalf of Pima County residents, we honor the tribal nations who have served as caretakers of this land from time immemorial and respectfully acknowledge the ancestral homelands of the Tonotum Nation and the multi-millennial presence of the Pasco Yaki tribe within Pima County. Consistent with Pima County's commitment to diversity and inclusion, we strive toward building equal partner relationships with Arizona's tribal nations. Thank you, I really appreciate that we do this. So, singing this honor song and the song is about, it's a powwow song. Powwow comes from the plains and it's spread to many of the different tribes and my dad comes from a plains tribe, Hidatsa tribe. I'm also Seminole and Creek. And so powwow song, it's an intertribal song calling people to come together with a good heart. They're coming together with a good heart and celebrate. So, it's an honor song. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's beautiful, thank you.
Thank you so much.
That's beautiful, thank you.
Usually pause for pause is the highlight of the meeting, but I think today that was. Now we move on to item four on the regular agenda, pause for pause.
Hi, everybody. My name's Monica. I'm the Director here at Pima Animal Care Center and today I'm coming to you for pause for pause with my friend Thor. Thor came to us about a month ago. He's an owner surrender. Thor is looking for a new home. As you can see, he's definitely a little piglet. You'll probably hear a couple snorts from him. He is a really nice dog. He is deaf, so sometimes other dogs and little kids make him really nervous. Along with Thor, we have got hundreds of other pets looking for homes. All of our adoption fees are currently waived other than the $20 licensing fee. Also, we have been seeing a huge demand for help with Safety Net Fosters. Safety Net Fosters provides short-term housing, temporary housing for pets of people in crisis. And boy, we're getting, it seems like every day, two or three requests for help with people and their pets, keeping them together. So if you are interested in helping people keep their pets, sign up to be a Safety Net Foster today. Go to our website to sign up and learn more and we hope to see you soon. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you. And now, let's see, we are going to proclamations. Our first proclamation is to Donna Pachurach, Jeff Pachura's wife. I'll move the item.
A second.
Motion and a second. Is there any objection? Hearing none. Supervisor Christie will make the presentation.
I think the honor song we just heard is going to take on an additional and very special meaning today as we honor a great hero and first responder. Who would like to hold a proclamation? Thank you. Whereas the late Jeff Pachura became the Northwest Fire District's first chief in November 1988 and served in the position for 24 years. And whereas during his time as fire chief, Pachura led the expansion of the Northwest Fire District to serve our growing community, was an inductee to the Arizona Fire Service Hall of Fame, served as President of the Arizona Fire Chiefs Association, and served on the Center for Public Safety Excellence Board of Directors from 2011 to 2019. And whereas his professional accomplishments are too numerous to be captured in a single document and his personal impact on those who knew him are too immense to comprehend. And whereas those fortunate enough to have worked with Chief Pai will forever miss his warm smile, firm handshake, and the enduring embrace he gave those around him. And whereas his decades of professional achievement and service, Pachura was never far from his passion of wildland firefighting. And whereas Pachura tragically died while performing the job he loved and at which he excelled. His actions helped save countless homes, unknown acres of natural habitat, and protected the lives of thousands of wildland firefighters working on the front lines. And whereas those who knew him are remembering his life and his legacy. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims in memoriam and suitably honors in perpetuity the legacy of Chief Jeff Pachura for his decades of firefighting service to the citizens of Pima County and the state of Arizona, passed and adopted the 17th day of May 2022. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Madam Chair Supervisors, for the record Brad Bradley, Fire Chief, Northwest Fire District. I would tell you, serving the residents of the state of Arizona, more importantly the residents of Pima County was one of the highest honors for Jeff. And today's proclamation is especially meaningful. And so I want to thank you on behalf of not only the Pachura family, the West family that's with us as well, all extended family and members of the Northwest Fire District. We really appreciate this. Thank you.
I'm curious, how long, I'm trying to remember, how long was Jeff chief, was the number of years?
Oh, 27, I think, years. He was the district's first fire chief.
Yeah. And I haven't been here that long, but throughout most of his tenure I was here. And he was so accessible and he's definitely missed.
There's no question, if you choose to fill, I'll do it the best I can and certainly love the working relationship with Pima County and great working relationship with Ms. Lester and all of her staff. Just so appreciative for everything that Pima County does for all of the fire districts in Arizona. So, thank you.
No, thank you. And yes, you've got big shoes to fill. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the addendum one. Item one, a presentation of a proclamation to Nancy Cole, who's our Director, Capital Program, Pima County and Arizona American Public Works Association proclaiming the week of May 15 through the 21st to be Public Works Week. I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. There are no objections. I'll read the proclamation. And Nancy, I know you're here. Anybody else?
There you are.
All right.
Whereas Pima County Public Works Professionals are superheroes that serve, you like being a superhero? Good. Superhero, right? Shiro, that serve our community and exemplify grit, perseverance, and resilience when encountering exhausting work challenges each day. And whereas our public works professionals keep this community strong by providing an infrastructure of exemplary services in transportation, flood control, air and water quality, natural and cultural resources, parks and sport grounds, public buildings and open spaces, rite of way management, and wastewater reclamation. And whereas the American Public Works Association has declared the week of May 15 through the 21st as National Public Works Week, celebrating the thousands of superheroes who without fail and oftentimes without thanks deliver our public work services. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims this week of May 15 through the 21st, 2022, to be Public Work Week throughout Pima County and urges all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works organizations to recognize the invaluable contributions that our public work officials, including all blue and white collar professionals, make to our infrastructure and help build and maintain every day to sustain our comfort, health, and overall well-being in support of our quality of life, passed and adopted this 17th day of May. Congratulations Nancy, you want to say a few words?
Thank you Chair Bronson. Thank you Board. I want to point out that today I'm standing here for hundreds of professionals who work for Pima County and in Pima County to keep that infrastructure rolling every day and keep you unaware of how many of us are doing that for you. So if you know a public works professional, someone in engineering, construction, or maintenance, give them a hug today. Thanks again.
All right. And no, thank you and congratulations. And hold our photo up there. Hey, you guys like your moto jacket. There you go. Now, you have another proclamation. This time it's item two on the addendum. It's a presentation of a proclamation proclaiming the month of May 2022 to be Mental Health Awareness Month in Pima County. I'll move the item.
A second.
There are no objections. Motion carries. Supervisor Gruhova will make the presentation. And I think it's to Michelle Crowe. Oh, there she is.
Oh, that's okay. Do you want to announce who else is joining us?
Yeah, I want to, yeah, Erica Irving was also scheduled to be here to accept the proclamation with me with Mental Health America. She had COVID. She got COVID, so, which is about the third person I've heard of in about as many days to get COVID. So, everybody stay healthy out there. I think we're, there's a surge coming. So, help me out here folks. I know we have Christina Bickelman here with NAMI and we have Judy Kaye with Pima County Interfaith. And we have RC and Paula with Liberty Partnership Kino Neighborhood Council. I don't think Suzie made it. Okay. And then we have Melissa Hams and Kylie Horn with Arizona Youth Partnership. Did I get everybody?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right, you jump in there. Okay, you go there. All right. Well, thank you all for joining us. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. So, whereas stable mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all people face challenges in life that can impact their mental health, and whereas Arizona ranks 49th in the nation overall and among our youth for mental health conditions, and whereas among youth in Arizona, 40.9% exhibit symptoms of depression higher than the national average, and 39.1% suffer from anxiety disorder, and whereas suicide is the second leading cause of death among 10 to 24-year-olds, and 10.4% of Arizona youth attempt suicide. And whereas prevention, including education, is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, but stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking help. And whereas the Federal Mental Health Parity and Addiction Equity Act demands that mental health be treated equally with physical health, and whereas the state of Arizona affirmed its commitment to mental health parity with the unanimous legislative passage of Jake's Law in 2020, and whereas Pima County has reaffirmed its commitment to mental health of its employees by opting into all protections of the federal act affords. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the month of May 2022 to be Mental Health Awareness Month in Pima County and encourages residents to increase awareness and understanding of the steps to increase awareness and understanding of the steps we can take to protect mental health and the need for appropriate accessible services for all who have mental health conditions, passed and adopted this 17th day of May. Thank you. Thank you for being here. We're going to take a picture.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, thank you so much for this proclamation. Our involvement, Children's Action Alliance involvement is relatively short compared to those, I think, that have been doing mental health advocacy for decades now. But it has been come all too apparent for us that when we talk to youth, their number one concern and priority is needing additional access to mental health education and mental health services. And they have been calling for this for years and years, well before the pandemic, they've been raising alarm bells. And well before the pandemic certainly exacerbated mental health challenges for us all, and well before the U.S. Surgeon General issued a report calling youth mental health a nationwide public health crisis. We all know the stats and they're alarming. We heard many of them here today in the proclamation. And frankly, they're scary. And most of all, we know it works. Early identification and intervention is everything. So on behalf of Children's Action Alliance and the members of this broader coalition, we just want to thank Pima County for reaffirming its commitment to the health and well-being of its employees and their families, and ensuring that they have all protections under federal law by voluntarily, fully opting in. I know some may have seen this as just sort of a minor adjustment in administrative procedures, but I can assure you, it was a really big deal for mental health advocates across the country who have been pushing to achieve full mental health parity in all plans, health plans across the U.S. for decades now. And this was a really important step. It garnered a lot of national attention, I can tell you, evidenced by my emails from people I didn't even know were working on this issue at the national level, and created a real sense of hope and momentum in closing the few remaining loopholes. And we applaud Pima County's leadership and within this state and within that national landscape. So it means a great deal to all of us and sends a very strong message to Pima County employees and their families that all essential health services are fully available to them. And I just want to thank you guys so much for that reaffirmation. Thank you.
And then we've got one more proclamation. And Supervisor Scott, I understand no one is available to receive it. Did you wish to read it?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you very much. I'll be presenting this proclamation to a gathering of people who have been fighting the scourge of gun violence for many years. You may remember that we passed the proclamation last year as well. You may also remember that the tragic shooting--
No, no, my question, I'm going to interrupt you. My question is, do you want to read it? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Okay, then let me move the item so that you can read it.
Oh, thank you.
A second.
Motion and a second. If there are no objections, motion carries.
Madam Chair, I abstain.
Okay. All right, Supervisor Scott.
Thank you. Last year, the person who asked me to present this on behalf of herself and other people who've been fighting gun violence in our community was one of our constituents, Patricia Masech. You all may remember that the tragic shootings of January 8, 2011 occurred outside a grocery store in District One. Ms. Masech bravely wrestled an ammo clip away from the shooter, perhaps preventing more injuries and deaths. She's been working to prevent gun violence ever since then. You'll also note that the proclamation does not advocate for any particular piece of legislation, but merely speaks to the need to reduce the number of senseless gun deaths in our county and in our country. I think that's especially compelling after what happened in Buffalo last weekend. But unfortunately, any day that we read this, we'd be able to point to acts of senseless gun violence throughout our country. Here's the proclamation. Whereas every day more than 100 Americans are killed and more than 200 are wounded in gun violence, and on average, there are more than 16,000 gun homicides every year, and whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Arizona has more than 1,100 gun deaths every year, and our state has the 19th highest rate of gun deaths in the United States, and whereas protecting public safety is the Board of Supervisors' highest responsibility. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people that shouldn't have them, and whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever, as the pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than a year of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence, and whereas in January 2013, 15-year-old Hadia Pendleton of Chicago was tragically shot and killed, and on June 3, to recognize Pendleton's 25th birthday, she was born on June 2, 1997, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Pendleton, other victims of gun violence, and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Pendleton's friends who asked her classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 3 to help raise awareness about gun violence, now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims Friday, June 3, 2022, to be Gun Violence Awareness Day in Pima County, and encourages all citizens to support their community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, we now move on to--
Chair Bronson, I'm sorry, can I ask if we can move up item number 26? Our county recorder is here and today is the City of Tucson election, so she's kind of stretched thin. And I'm wondering if we can do that, since I know that the hearings and the other things are going to take a significant amount of time.
That's on the regular agenda. All right, let's move that up quickly. Item 26. What's the pleasure of the Board?
I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. And this is primary election early drop-off sites and emergency voting location and resolution. Aren't we doing 26 and 27?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be ideal.
Okay. Okay, so item 26, we have a motion and a second for Resolution 2022-26. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
It was noted the recorder is here. Should I direct my questions at the recorder?
This is a resolution that's simply approving the--
Well, you asked for discussion.
Okay, no, I'm just clarifying. This is approving the early voting sites.
I have some questions about the early voting sites.
All right, proceed.
Thank you, Madam Recorder, for being here today.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
First, how do all early ballot drop-off sites and emergency voting locations, how are they going to differ from what they were in 2020?
I'm very glad you asked that. There will be very, first of all, there will be no difference in that, except that for, if you are following along on the Exhibit A, rather than having one of our locations open, which is the Eastside location, which is our Eastside office, that place has been, that only is an office that has space for five desks. It's not big enough. It has such a huge flow there. We have replaced that location a quarter of a mile down the road to the Fellowship Bible Church. Other than that, and the reopening of the Pasquayaki early voting site, there will be no changes.
Okay, Madam Chair, I do have a question on the Eastside County Recorder's Office situation, but one more question. Could you describe the individual site staffing? What is it staffed, how? What does it look like?
So we have, I believe, there are, depending on the location, it does vary. We do have at least two staff members of opposite parties at every location. Some of our more rural locations, like the Ton-Atham Geek Association Housing, that one will only have two. But depending on the location, that number does increase as needed.
Can you give an example of the increase as needed?
I believe we have a total of seven staff members at a minimum of each, at each location. Hillary Heiser, my Assistant Chief Deputy, has been working on the staffing for each of those locations, so.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, thank you for the question. Of the 15 locations, it's variable depending on the volume that each location receives. So at a minimum, we'll have at least three staff members for one rotation, so you'll always have a party balance. And then at some locations, we will have upwards of seven to eight. It just depends. We always like to keep it as an odd number to allow people to have breaks.
And what triggers that dependent?
The volumes of ballots that were dropped off in the 2020 election.
I see. So whatever transpired in the 2020 election is going to be transferred to how the staffing will end up in 2022?
Yes.
Predictive modeling.
Yes, that's correct.
We're utilizing the 2020 data, recognizing that the 2022 is a congressional election year, which typically means decreased participation. However, we're planning on continuing the same level of preparation for the 2020.
And this additional staffing can be added or deleted at a moment's notice, or how is that triggered?
Chairman Bronson and Supervisor Christie, yes. We have the ability to upstaff. We're currently doing an upstaffing of 130 intermittent election workers is our goal, so we're constantly filling those staffs. We have about 100 intermittent election workers that are returning to our staff. So these are experienced early voting site, early ballot drop-off workers. And depending on the volume, we have rotations that are able to go around. So it's a dynamic staffing that goes from the time the ballot drop-off location opens to the time the ballot drop-off location closes.
Okay, could you, Madam Chair, could you please describe the ballot drop-off boxes, the staffing there, the supervision, the controls?
Yes, thank you. So our ballot drop-off boxes are the standard ballot drop-off boxes that you see at our locations right now. So we are an early drop-off site for the City of Tucson, they're having a special election currently. So we have ballot drop-off boxes like those. And we also have the metal ballot drop-off boxes. A drop-off box is not, it's kept with two-party balance. So we're in an election, and our lanyards are color-coded depending upon the party. So Recorder Casares Kelly and I, we could be together at a ballot dropbox, but two of us of the same color, we could not.
So who will be at the ballot dropbox?
So a very important distinction is that we do not have in Pima County unstaffed ballot dropboxes. So the way that they have them in, let's say Maricopa County, which looks like a postal box, where people can just walk up, put the ballot in the receptacle and walk away, we do not have that in Pima County. Every single one of our ballot dropboxes are staffed the entire time, and we maintain that party balance.
So you are giving us the assurances that those ballot drop-off boxes will be fully and constantly staffed at all times?
During this election, yes. Or during the primary and the general election, yes, because we have not moved towards unstaffed ballot dropboxes.
Unlike other counties.
Unlike other counties.
So there--
And states.
And the state, yes.
So there's--
It's more secure.
There's going to be ballot drop-off box staffing all the time that the ballot drop-off boxes are available?
Yes, that is correct.
In both the primary and the general?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. And now to the Eastside Recorder's Office, that's being closed as a location, and there's a church, as a voting center.
Yes, it will remain open for business, for recording, and voter registration. However, any voting for ballot replacement or early voting will occur at the Fellowship Bible Church.
Well, you'd be glad to know that that location has been a favorite of my wife's and mine to vote for many years, and that's why I'm asking the question regarding the transference over to this church down the road. Is the church going to be opened and staffed in the same manner during the same hours as the County Recorder's Office location was, or is, has been?
Yes, it will be, including on Election Day with extended hours from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., as well as, I believe--
Emergency voting.
Emergency voting.
Yes. So the Fellowship Bible Church is, will be staffed by our staff. There's a secure location that's locked, that we will only have access to. We have security measures in place, sorry, we have security measures in place to ensure that the, there's tape, you know, there are seals that are signed and that are covered in the Elections Procedures Manual that we adhere to.
So the process will be seamless from what it was in the County Recorder's Office--
Yes.
Down the road at the church. How much is it costing the county to utilize that church by closing the County Recorder's Office?
It'll be about $6,000 total for six weeks total, yes.
For both elections?
For the primary and the general, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Okay, any further discussion, then I'll call the question. Any objections?
I object.
One objection, any further objections? And Supervisor Heinz hasn't joined us yet.
Madam Chair, not yet.
All right. If there are no further objections--
There he is.
Oh, he just joined.
He just joined us now, for the record.
Okay, for the record, Supervisor Heinz has joined us. So there are no further objections, then motion carries four to one. Moving on to the next item, item 27, general election early ballot drop-off sites and emergency voting locations. Again, this is for the general, we just approved the primary. And it's Resolution 2022-27. I'll move the item.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any objections?
I object.
One objection. If there are no further objections, motion carries. We now move back to the regular order of the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The regular order of the agenda, and we're at call to the public. And as we begin this, I want to remind individuals who wish to participate electronically or telephonically must contact the clerk's office by the deadline date listed on the agenda. Each speaker needs to fill out a speaker card, and will be limited to three minutes. Speakers should adhere to the rules of civility and refrain from impertinent or slanderous remarks. When you are called upon to speak, step forward to the podium, state your name for the record, and direct your comments to the Board, not the audience. And those who do not abide by these guidelines will have their comments interrupted. And with that, we move on to our first-- our first individual, Joyce Brazey.
My name is Joyce Brazey, and I've resided in Arizona for 37 years, you know, living in Tucson. And the reason I'm here today, I come to support Constable Deborah Martinez. I believe two other veterans, Cliff Wade and Bruce Hamilton, already came before you regarding this matter, and it was referenced, her character and credibility. As a veteran, being in the veteran community here in Tucson, in the 23 years that I've tried to access resources via veterans, serving Tucson Veterans and the Red Cross, I've been denied by both of these individuals. And these men have the power, being beneficiaries of the community, by having the resources that they're supposed to be reaching out to veterans. But instead, they're here trying to be a tool in damaging her career before it's even started. I mean, I have a history in Tucson with County Administrator Mark Napier, and it wasn't good. Everybody knows of his reputation, being a bully, abuse of power. People are indicted. Was it hearsay? Was it fact? All that I ask is that Deborah gets a fair chance. And I want to explain the piece of paper that I gave you. It's a picture of fallen hero cop Eric Height. I did not give that to you to disrespect him, but I gave it to you to bring the awareness that sometimes in law enforcement, officers will have a lapse of judgment, and it can affect somebody for decades. In 2016, Officer Height stated on a police report, "I was a suspect in a suspicious death here in Tucson." It did go to the county attorney. It did go.
And your time has expired. Wrap it up quickly.
Okay. But my point being, that police report is still in the police database. I asked our current Chief Chad Kasma...
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being respectful.
Thank you.
Robert Brice.
I'm Robert Royce. First, let me remind City of Tucson voters that your last chance to drop off your road tax ballot is 7:00 today at appropriate locations, including City Hall. Next, let me cover my Pima County sales tax, property tax reform. My taxes are going up. My property taxes are going up for three reasons. Number one, the Rio Nuevo Board and the City of Tucson dissolving all downtown oligarchs of eight years of taxes on their development and passing them on to everyone else. Number two, we have people spending too much, people rehab their houses in my neighborhood, borrow $50,000, then they sell them for $150,000 over. And I'm, how does that affect my value of my property when I have no money to rehab my house? My house is not worth $230,000 in the shape it's in. So my property values are being distorted by the fact that people are paying too much for houses, and people are rehabbing houses, and it has nothing to do with my house, and it's unfair. Number three, I'm paying $800 a year to Pima County in property taxes, $175 a year to City of Tucson for property taxes. The City of Tucson actually supplies my services. So why am I paying four and a half times more for Pima County services that I mostly don't get than for the City of Tucson taxes, services that I do get? And the answer to that is, Pima County has no sales tax. The City of Tucson basically funds its general fund with sales taxes. So basically, since there is no Pima County sales tax, they dip in my pocket to help subsidize people in the foothills who have a lot more income and wealth than people in the city do, and this is totally unfair. The only reason we can't have a sales tax is because the legislature doesn't enable us. I lived in Arkansas for 20 years. In Washington County, Arkansas, it has a one-cent sales tax, which is payable to the entity that collects it. If it's collected in Fayetteville, it goes to Fayetteville. If it goes to Lincoln, collected in Lincoln, it goes to Lincoln, et cetera, et cetera. And if it's collected by Washington County, it goes to Washington County. That's what we need here. We need to replace Tucson's charter-enabled sales tax with a legislative and voter-enabled countywide sales tax, which will equalize the playing field between the City of Tucson merchants, county merchants, and give the county a cash flow which will ease the burden on the homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Norquist.
All right, Members of the Board, Administrator Lesher, good morning. My name is Peter Norquist. Today, I would like to comment on the discussion currently taking place on Pima County voting centers. At our previous meeting, there were several issues which were raised regarding the implementation of infrastructure to be used in the 129 proposed voting centers. Responses to these queries were predicated on the assumption that voting would be done in good faith, and that potential problems would be primarily technical in nature, for example, connectivity, printing, and training issues, and unrelated to intentional and fraudulent activity. Although potential technical problems were addressed at the last meeting, the ability to secure against outright fraud and tampering was not. To illustrate why we would, why we should be concerned at the Pima County level, please allow me to relate an example of suspicious activity which was observed last year during the City Council election. At one of the six word ballot drop locations, an unmarked SUV with the Kentucky license plate 063ZXA was observed pulling up at approximately 2:30 p.m. The occupants of the vehicle stepped out and delivered what appeared to be a replacement ballot box to this location, collecting the original ballot drop box, which had not been secured with either a litter of zip ties and loading it into the SUV before finally driving away with it. To the best of my knowledge, this violated several laws pertaining to the transportation of ballot boxes. Note that no amount of infrastructure preparation of the type so far discussed could have prevented this form of tampering. With this in mind, let's revisit the voting centers. The purported reasons for the centers is decentralized and speed counting. But these counting centers usually finish their counts last, not first. Logic in many close call races indicate that the main reason large counting centers are used is to assure that there is enough vote fraud to swing elections, hence the late arriving vote counts. Not only do large voting centers often use optical-scanned vote counting machines, which are susceptible to rigging, the fact that the ballots have to be transported to the counting location provides plenty of opportunity to add fake ballots for one candidate or another, throw out ballots or alter ballots en route, something which would not be possible if they were counted in C2 at precinct locations. Also, at a large counting center, a small staff trained to commit fraud could repeatedly be used, limiting the likelihood of getting caught cheating. One security measure that would help in this respect would be mandating that all election processes be recorded with video and audio equipment. To summarize, under the current plan, there are multiple opportunities for tampering with several vulnerable points in the process. First, run buck election services will be using poorly curated voter rolls to print ballots, which will then be carried by truck to the Cherry Bell Post Office to be mailed to would-be voters, whether they will have the option of early voting by mail or drop box. Early voting is an open invitation for electoral fraud, and I'll be wrapping up, both by repeater voting and the temptation to alter vote totals sitting in unattended computer databases for nearly one month.
Your time has expired.
I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you very much.
Sami Hamad.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and Members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Sami Hamad. I want to come here and speak with you today about a recent action this Board took. On March 15, this Board voted to appoint Deborah Martinez Garibay as Constable for Justice Precinct 8. Since that time, in the last two months, a lot has occurred, as you know. I can tell you from a personal point of view what has gone on. On April 18, Deborah Martinez Garibay served via injunction against harassment. She claimed I was stalking her, following her, and harassing her. Let me just set the record straight. I never did that. On May 4, I fought the injunction in court. A judge looked at the evidence and the testimony and removed it from me immediately. Since that time, as we've noticed, as a report that Mr. Napier brought out, it has been brought up about the conduct of Constable Martinez Garibay, about using fraud, forgery methods, and those various means to get on the ballot. How can we trust a public servant to do right by the public when they're not doing right at all and seeking the job right, and also using the courts as a weapon to bully, harass, and intimidate people, which has been said here in previous Board meetings? I ask you to consider this. A little more diligence. Look into her background, actions, and misconduct that has occurred in the last two months since she's been appointed. Look into what she's done in terms of submitting her petitions to examine the potential for fraud and forgery and trying to seek elective office. If anything, if a criminal investigation does occur, or even an indictment, suspend her. In order to do that, so the public can have trust again in the work that the Constable Office does, and that there is confidence brought back to the people of Pima County and the work that the Constables in Pima County as a whole does. Members of the Board, I thank you for your time and your consideration today, and may you all have a good day.
Thank you. Drew Heaton.
Madam Chair, thank you for this opportunity. And Supervisors, my name is Drew Heaton. And as I looked over the agenda, I thought to myself, three minutes just simply isn't enough. So I've been lost in my thoughts on the way over here. I took a wrong turn. That's one of the reasons why I was late. But just to say how much what I'm about to say concerns me, and some of you I will be addressing, thank you very much, behind me, but in an effort to approach the Board, I'm sorry that you have to look at my backs. But I wanted to say thank you very much to Administrator Lesher and to Elections Director Constance Hargrove for taking the time to personally meet with me and listen to my concerns about the voting centers. I appreciated so much that. I also appreciated that there was some personal contact, and Administrator Lesher reached out her hand to me one of the first times we met, and I was hesitant. And I wonder how she read that, because in actuality, I'm a very physically emotional person. But I think I've become hesitant over time, and a situation that happened at the Pima County Fair will punctuate that. I'm standing at the Libertarian booth next to one of my colleagues, and I was speaking with the gentleman who was a Democrat, and we were following, we're tracking on many things, which I do as a Libertarian, right? Republicans, Democrats, we're somewhere in the middle. And we were tracking on many issues that we agreed until he finally said, "But you don't like those anti-vaxers, right?" And I'm standing next to a person, my colleague, who is vaccinated. I am not vaccinated. And I said, "We don't have a problem with each other." But he refused my hand, as if I was the plague. So now we have a situation with voting centers, where in the city right now, people are being forced to be vaccinated. I personally have been watching the vaccine issue for 30 years. I have been keeping my finger on the pulse and speaking out for medical informed consent for the last eight, which is much, for a long time, before the current health narrative. And I feel that we don't want to repeat the same things that have happened in history, where people, and we seem to focus right now on race, but it's much greater than race. And what brought me to concerns about this issue was reading about the Rwandan genocide. And there's no talk about race there. We're talking class. Hutu, Tutsi, same race. But they were literally slaughtered by the other class because of, they were seen as dirty. And this isn't the only example that I could use throughout history. So my concerns, I hope that you'll reach out to me. Thank you.
And just, I know you had another question as to why Libertarian Party isn't included at the voting sites. And I don't know the answer, but if staff could get back to Ms. Heaton and provide that information to her?
You're welcome.
And now we have Marcelina Flores. Or Marcelino, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, good morning. Thank you for having us. Thank you for the land acknowledgement. You know, being a member of the Pasquayaki tribe, it was a real pleasure to hear that honor song. It really brought back a lot of memories. But, you know, at the same time, things have changed, even in the ceremonies. And so it's been a long time since I've actually been in the presence of one of those songs because of the pandemic. And so, you know, similarly, our county employees have been faced with great obstacles, you know, during this pandemic, and they've met the challenge and exceeded the services that they provide to the community. And I'm here before you as the Pima County Division Chair of ASME Local 449, and I'm in support of the COLA amendment that was offered, Number 7, for a couple reasons. Foremost, I think it's important to recognize that the recovery has not been equitable. There is analysis and proven data that the K-shaped recovery is that where those at the bottom are most adversely affected. And so with the proposed COLA increases to those with the least, I think it, you know, to even capture some of the inflation costs that are being met today, I think that's a good path to go down. And I hope that that will be supported and advocated for by the Board. And I look forward to working continuously with the Board as I've just stepped into this role as the Chair of the Pima County Division. Looking forward to meeting with those that I haven't met with, and I thank those that I have been able to meet with. I appreciate your time, and I'm here to help.
Thank you. And Amelia Kramer.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, thank you so much for your attention to the intergovernmental agreement regarding initial appearance judges. And I commend you to the letter that I've submitted, and thank you very much for your persistent attention to this important issue.
Thank you for understanding the rules. You know, be brief, be sincere, and be seated. I appreciate that. All right. That concludes our call to the public. Now moving back to our agenda.
Madam Chair.
Somebody say something?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Scott.
Thank you. Some of the comments made about the situation involving the Constable and JP 8 reminds me of a conversation that I had last week with Ms. Lesher regarding follow-up she was going to have with Human Resources, and perhaps also the lead Constable to offer some guidance for the Board with future appointments, not just of Constables, but all political appointments. So I'd now like to ask her that in the... So I'd now like to ask her that in the form of direction.
Thank you. All right, let's move back to our regular agenda. We have some changes to the regular agenda. On page three, item 14, Anti-Rocketeering Revolving Fund, County Attorney Conover is requesting this item be continued to our Board of Supervisors meeting of June 7, 2022. And I think she wishes to provide us some additional information before we approve the item. So if there are no objections, we'll continue that item. And again, it's page three, item 14.
On the regular agenda?
On the regular agenda. Addendum agenda, I'm sorry.
And it's page four.
Page three, page three, item 14, it says here.
Look, I know, but it's on page four.
Okay, it is supposed to be page four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, page four, item 14. So if there are no objections, well, it is page three.
Oh, then my printer is just, it says four.
Okay, it says three on mine.
Okay, we're good. I don't know.
It is page three. You're over, you're outvoted.
My, no, I just, my printer doesn't like numbers, I guess. I don't know.
Okay. All right, and then on page six, on the regular agenda, item 19B. This is a request for removal. However, before we can do that, the board needs to vote on, and Judge Bergen has asked that the item be withdrawn from the agenda, but before we can do that, we have to vote to reconsider the action that was taken on May 3, 2022. And this is agenda item on the regular agenda, number 19A and B. So I put this item on the agenda, and if we could, I'm going to move to reconsider. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any objection?
I'm sorry, Chair Bronson, to reconsider, so we can discuss the item? Okay.
If there's no objections, we'll reconsider. And now we move on to 19B. And B is initial, staff is requesting initial, requesting approval of a 10-year extension. I'm going to move we do that, but then I'm going to move that we then honor Judge Bergen, and he is here, his request to remove the item from the agenda. I understand he wants, he is, they're considering revising the IGA. It's 10 years old, and it's not accurate. It doesn't reflect what's happening today. So I'm going to move approval of the 10-year extension. And then again, I'm going to honor or hope that you all honor Judge Bergen's request to remove the item, but so we can continue doing business. We need that 10-year extension approved, and then we'll come back and withdraw it, and Judge Bergen will provide us with an updated IGA.
Chair Bronson?
Yes.
I would not be in favor of approving a 10-year extension of the current IGA. I understand that it's coming. I don't know when. We could extend through the end of this calendar year.
Or let's, why don't we extend for a year, and then hopefully we'll have the IGA. Well, let me, Judge Bergen, you want to come forward just a minute?
Welcome to the event.
I know that we need to extend at this point. We need to extend the IGA so you can continue what you're doing, but then if we...
...provide us with an update.
What am I getting, echoes?
No. Madam Chair, I could just ask for clarification. We have actually two different and separate actions. One is for reconsideration.
Which passed?
That passed.
That passed.
Okay, and the second one now is to...
Approve the 10-year, and then to go from there and honor Judge Bergen's request to withdraw the item, which effectively, well, I don't know exactly. Maybe I can get Leslie Lukash to, effectively, do we need to approve the 10-year extension, or do we, can we go immediately to withdrawing the item?
Chair, members of the board, I believe that you can either vote it up or down, if that's the board's preference, or you can choose to withdraw the item and not vote on it, but you've already moved the item, so...
I'll withdraw my motion to remove the, okay, I'm going to withdraw B, and then I'm going to move to honor Judge Bergen's request for withdrawal. I'll move that. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So Chair Bronson, I'm confused, because I think that we can either take action on the item or not, is my understanding. And so the item is here, we can just, right, vote it up or down or not vote.
Right. We're not going to withdraw my motion.
Right. And then the other issue for me is that, you know, we currently don't have an IGA in place. It's already expired. So my thought would be, I don't know why we'd have to vote either way, considering that what we passed at our last board meeting, the court isn't going to move in that direction anyway. So we do, I mean, we did vote, this board voted, it was, what was it, 3-2?
3-2.
3-2, right? And so we voted on an item, and we, so you asked for that reconsideration, but we still don't really have, I guess at this point, if we reconsider, we...
Which is why I'm withdrawing, which is why I'm withdrawing B, because then if I withdraw, well, again, Ms. Lukash, if we honor Judge Bergen's request to withdraw the item, what's the net effect of the withdrawal of the IGA?
Chair Bronson, that would depend on what last meeting's vote actually accomplished.
The vote that I think, and Madam Clerk, correct me, the vote was 3-2, I think it was to approve, was it a one-year, one-year?
It was a one-year extension to approve requesting modifications. And so that item is the one that we're reconsidering at this point. And so if we just want to vote on item B and vote it up or down...
Because we already voted to reconsider it.
Correct.
Right. So, okay, we'll vote, okay, then I'll, I'll...
I know.
I'll move item B and call the question as to whether or not we want to go with our original motion, which was to grant a one-year extension with conditions.
Madam Chair, we currently have a vote to, a request to withdraw item, as requested by Judge Bergen. That was moved by you, seconded by Supervisor Christie.
And so...
So we do that, we just take the item off?
Yep.
And then we'd have to deal with...
Right, exactly.
So B is to withdraw.
Well, no, what we're doing now, yeah, what we're doing now is honoring Judge Bergen's request to withdraw the item. And I made the motion, you seconded.
And I'll second.
I think you did second it. And so let's do a roll call vote, now that I'm totally confused.
Reconsiderations are always...
Yep.
Okay, so just so everyone is clear, the vote, or the motion is to withdraw the item. Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Gruhava?
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Oh, very nice.
Oh, very nice.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Bronson?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. You can go back and do your thing, Judge Bergen.
And so Chair Bronson, just for clarification, then, we're expecting something to come forward in the near future, since right now we don't have any agreement with the courts.
Right, correct. And did you want to make any comments, or discretion is a better part of valor.
I'm happy to answer questions, but...
Okay, I think we're good.
When you have the, when you have the votes, walk away.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, now we get to the most important thing, but probably the most interesting thing we're going to do today, and that is item seven, tentative budget. And this requires a roll call vote. And these are hearings. Item eight is review and adoption of the Flood Control District tentative budget for fiscal year 2022. What's, is this a hearing? Is there anyone in the audience that...
Seven doesn't have any...
So we did the, we finished with tentative budget. I can ask Ms. Lesher if she'd make some comments before we begin the adoption.
Chair Bronson, I believe that the, all the comments came from your department heads and others last week during the budget hearings without, if there are no questions, I have another, nothing to add at this time.
Chair Supervisor...
Yeah, Chair Bronson, I have a question. So we have, we received a letter from the Chair of the Board of Health requesting some additional funds, and then there are two items on this agenda where I've, our office has requested two items, so I'm wondering...
But this, this one is sitting as, oh, go ahead.
Right, and so I'm wondering if this is the time to bring those items up, because it's tentative budget presentations, or later on, when we're going to, when would be the appropriate time to bring those items forward?
When we do the tentative general.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, and I'm trying to find, and I don't know why this isn't pulling up. Okay, we're on flood control. This is a review and adoptions of the Flood Control District tentative budget for fiscal year 2022, 23. I just found it. And it is the regional flood control district's budgeted expenditure is $18,475,401 for a, for a tax rate of 0.3235. Again, this is a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on this item at this time?
Madam Chair?
Supervisor.
Just a clarification, just a brief synopsis of what it is that this tentative budget is what we're voting on. This is just the maximum amount that we're dealing with? Is that...
Well, at this point, it's the cap, yeah. We, this sets the top. We can always lower it...
But we can't go up?
But we can't go up.
Okay.
All right, and again, this is regional flood control, $18,475,401 for an effective rate of .3235. There's no one in the audience that wishes to address us. I move to close the public hearing and approve the tentative regional flood control district budget of $18,475,401 for an effective rate of .3235. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Madam Chair, I need a second.
Oh, is there a second? You second? Okay, Supervisor Gruhava seconded.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Gruhava?
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz? Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Bronson?
Yes. By your unanimous vote, motion carries. Moving on, this is a hearing, we're now moving, we're sitting as improvement district board. It is, we have quite a few, I'm not going to read them all, they're presented, but we have Hayhook Ranch, Cardinal Estates, Carriage Hills, Number 1 and 3, Desert Steps, Hermosa Hills Estates, Lakeside Number 1, Little Town, Longview Estates Number 1, Longview Estates Number 2, Manana Grande B, Manana Grande C, Midvale Park, Mortimer Edition, Oak Trees Number 1, 2, and 3, Orange Grove Valley, Peach Valley, Pepper Tree, Rolling Hills, Salida del Sol. And I'm going to move the item as, I'm closing public hearing, move the item as presented for the county improvement districts tentative budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any objections? Roll call.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Gruhava?
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Bronson?
Yes. By your vote, unanimous vote, motion carries. We now move on to Library District Board, and this is a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on this item at this time? If not, I move to close public hearing...
Second.
...and approve the Library District, County Free Library District Board in the amount of $46,600,637 for an effective rate of .5453.
Second, second.
Second, second. Okay, second again, okay. So any discussion? Roll call.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Gruhava?
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Bronson?
Yes. By your unanimous vote, motion carries. Moving on to Stadium District Board, this is a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on this item at this time? If not, I move to close public hearing and approve the budget for the Stadium District Board, the tentative budget of $8,824,807. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Gruhava?
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Bronson?
Yes. By your unanimous vote, motion carries. Moving on to item 13, this is...
Chair Bronson, this, excuse me, I believe we skipped item 11, the Rockin' K.
11, oh, well, Rockin' K, I did, thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
I was, I needed the number. Moving on to item 11, review and adoption of Rockin' K South Community, CFD Community Facilities District tentative budget for 2022, 2023. The, and let's see, it is revenue to Pima County is for fiscal year 2022, 23, is $111,963. Tax levy and debt, and a property tax levy of $4,530 of debt proceeds and investment earnings. In addition, expenses of $4,151,842 are included within the fiscal year recommended budget. So move the item, and I got a second, I think, from Supervisor Christie?
Correct.
All right. And we're closing the hearing. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing, or, roll call.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Gruhava?
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz?
Supervisor Scott? Yes.
Chair Bronson?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Board of Supervisors, we're now sitting as the board. This is a hearing. It's a review and adoption of the county tentative budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023. The recommended fiscal year budget is, well, let's see, we're doing the entire tentative, so the budgeted expenditures as recommended are $1,932,712,979 for an effective tax rate of $5.0652. This is a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on this item at this time? I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. And I believe you wanted some discussion.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bronson. So the Pima County Health Department, Board of Health, sent us all a communication... So the Pima County Health Department Board of Health sent us all a communication requesting an increase of 5.58 million, effectively adding 56 positions for a number of for a number of initiatives that I think are really important. And then part of this agenda, our office requested $2 million for land for preservation and purchasing of land, and then $5 million for housing and purchasing of land for housing. And then part of that would be obviously there's another item reviewing what we already have established. And so I'm not sure if this is the time that we can discuss those items and make sure that there is funding available for those initiatives. And so perhaps we can ask County Administrator Lesher.
Chair Bronson and Supervisor Gruhava, I think this is the appropriate time should the tentative budget is before you should members of the board wish to add specific items. I believe the question at this point was whether you would like to have the board vote to have the additional items expenditure items placed in the budget and then whether or not you would like us to come back with the budget that shows no increase in the proposed tax rate, but that how we how we would propose to fund whatever additional costs you have before you.
Yes, that would be ideal.
And I'm just curious, I'm not I'm not comfortable doing that unless we have again, this is a tentative if we're going to keep the ceiling at what it is and the tax rate. But what is the net effect then on our reserve fund balance? And I don't need an answer to that right now, but if I could get those numbers. But if we're keeping the effective tax rate as recommended, then we can have that discussion when we do final adoption.
So we're going to be voting on keeping the tax at the at the cap?
At the yeah, the tax rate at $5.0652. So it would we would keep it at that. But that is a decrease in the primary rate of what amount?
Chair Bronson, 13 cents.
So that's a decrease of 13 cents. However, valuations have gone up, so people's property taxes will go up even though we're decreasing the rate.
That is correct.
Madam Chair, but again, going to what Supervisor Gruhava is is talking about, in other words, a tweaking of the tentative budget, we can't do that right now.
Yep.
Is that correct? So there's there could be another time and place to do that, but it isn't.
Well, you we could do that now, but then that would we'd have to do some calculations as to what the new tax rate would be. But if we adopt the current tax rate, then the monies that Supervisor Gruhava has requested would have to come from somewhere.
Within the budget.
Within the current within the budget, recommended budget, which means there would be cuts other places.
So so what we can't we're voting on the ceiling that has been presented to the board?
Correct.
And that's it?
That's yeah, Supervisor, yes, that's it.
Chair Bronson, so I'm requesting an additional like an addition of 12.58 million.
And that would raise the ceiling?
That would raise the ceiling.
Oh, that's not going anywhere with me.
Well, I mean, I my issue is is there are some real significant needs and in a budget our size, the addition of 12.58 million, I'm not sure that that's going to make much of a change in the tax rate. But, you know, there really was no other time for us to bring these items forward. And there is an item in the agenda requesting that. But this is, I think, the time for us to make a decision as to whether any of these other items are going to be passed without having to cut to the base.
Excuse me, I think Chair Bronson, if I may, another option should the board select is to keep the tax rate level as what we've proposed. If there is if a majority of the board would like to direct us to include these items, and I know that there I believe Supervisor Heinz has other options he's liked he would like to consider, the board could direct staff to include those items at the current tax rate and come back with recommendations about what we propose to be cut to offset those costs so that there would not be an increase in the tax rate. So it's either I mean, obviously up to the board, additional costs and increase the tax rate, bring in these additional items, come back with a plan to adjust the tax rate. However.
So there are two options essentially. Option one is to keep the recommended tax rate as presented by county administration. Option two is to raise that tax rate to include the items that Supervisor Gruhava wishes to add.
Madam Chair, if we take option two, then we have to have a whole nother hearing and a whole nother agenda?
No.
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 I think what I was hoping for is since the current budget reflects a decrease in taxes that we're not increasing anything, we're likely not to hit anywhere near probably even increasing it would be, I think, a deduction of 12 to 12 cents versus 13 cents. I think worst case scenario, but I don't know.
Chair Bronson, I think if I may, I think we've got finance staff here.
It wouldn't be a decrease. It would be a decrease. It would be an increase in the rate.
Not.
If we adopt what you are recommending, it would increase the rate. If we adopt the current tax rate, the proposed tax rate of 5.0652, we are lowering the rate by what was it 12 cents, 13?
13 cents.
13 cents. But we are still increasing taxes because of the assessed valuations.
Again, Madam Chair, are we voting on the rate or the cap of the budget?
We are voting on both. We're voting on the tentative rate.
T tentative.
Which could go down.
Says tentative county budget.
Right. We're voting but we're voting on a tax rate. What that does is set the ceiling, which means that rate cannot we cannot exceed that rate when we adopt final budget.
So.
And then neither can the the budget dollar amount?
Right.
So.
Correct.
The rate and the dollar amount is what we're voting on?
Right. Were the expenditures, yes.
And Chair Bronson, if we were to add an additional 13 million or 12.58, is there anyone here from finance that could address how that might change the tax rate?
And Chair Bronson and Supervisor Gruhava, is it correct the we a million dollars is a penny.
Okay.
It's a round number.
So it would be not reducing, it would be a flat.
Yep.
Supervisor Heinz wanted to say something.
Do you want me to read something? Okay.
FY '22 ending cash balance, including all county accounts is $239 million. We have the capacity to adopt Supervisor Gruhava's items and also my proposal to increase the cost of living adjustment.
So essentially using carry forward, not changing. Well, we can we can have that discussion. I know I love the British accent. I think we can have that discussion if if the will of the board is to move forward, leave the ceiling and the rate the way it is, then we would have that discussion about carry forward or where we would be able to find funding if the majority board wants to move forward with the items.
And we would do that at time of final adoption.
Well, later on, we'll have an opportunity to discuss as well.
And I mean, I would Chair Bronson, one thing we can do, and first of all, I want to be clear that the the general fund balance is 137 million. There are additional fund balances that are indicated. We will get back with the board and provide some granularity on that. But they are things such as our enterprise funds or special revenues funds, and those are fairly well restricted funds.
Correct.
I don't believe that they would be as available.
They're not available, no.
But what we can do, again, if you establish today the tax rate and the you know, the ceiling and the tax rate, if there is a desire on the part of the board to look at the items presented by Supervisor Gruhava or the ones that I know that Supervisor Heinz has presented in terms of additional salary increases, if there's if the board would like to consider those, you can also direct staff to come back and provide you with some ideas about where we might recommend that the other parts of the budget be cut in order to accommodate those if that's the will of the board.
Okay.
All right. Okay, we have closed the hearing. Supervisor Scott.
Thank you. I was wondering if I could first ask the Chief Medical Officer, Dr. Garcia, to comment on the suggestion from the Board of Health. And then I also wanted to ask Supervisor Gruhava how she came up with the figure of $5 million for affordable housing and $2 million for land acquisition.
Supervisor Gruhava?
Oh, sure, I was going to let Dr. Garcia go next, but really, it was just looking at some of the properties that are available and talking to some department directors and staff about what is something that was attainable and also thinking about what this board would be willing to approve. So the five and the two are not other than that criteria, I mean, those can be adjusted.
And then.
It was really starting to establish the line item.
And then Dr. Garcia.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Scott, with regards to the specific request and in terms of how it was developed, I was not sure a part of that discussion. What I can tell you is that my concern for the Department of Health remains a fairly significant balance of unhired FTE. That is, we have approximately 120 PCNs that are in different stages of recruitment. I believe the Health Department can bring on approximately 10, maybe 11, 12 new hires per month. The kinds of hires that you're looking to do in addition with this proposed funding puts us way over that. And I'm having a hard time imagining how we would accomplish those hires in that short period of time. I do think that that the Board of Health has offered their best guidance in terms of.
That's one of the biggest issues, but you know, some options are like FDA standards, ethical decision review process for public health, you know, removing health improve health and removing barriers to healthy choices, a dedicated liaison, be skilled to develop and interact with local municipalities, all of the things that I think that we're able to do for a short period of time with the rollout of the vaccine and tests. Some of that is in here, but it's looking at climate based health climate based health risks, monitoring and mitigation and continued support congregates, develop subject matter expertise for noncommunicable disease focus, prove data development aggregation and analysis. I mean, that right there is a is something I think that we're not fully staffed at, and it's in support of noncommunicable programming. And that one is the I mean, all of the objectives, I think, are really important. And with the current staffing, if I'm a little higher than normal, but I think it's it's kind of been in this area, the number of people at the Health Department like hires staff FTE assigned.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Gruhava, you know, I agree that all those have articulated and have been articulated by our Health Department and by the Board of Health are merit and require substantial staffing. My concern is with the ability to bring on that more staff in an in a situation where we are currently only able between 10 and 12 or so per month. I do think that those things be invested in, and I believe that we can so with within in part within the existing budget. But we can look toward the future as we start building the fiscal year four budget early on in terms of how whether we have met needs or not.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Sir Scott, was that you?
Thank you. Yes, it is. Thank you. Able to divide the question and consider each one of these three items individually?
No, no, you have to adopt the overall you can if the items as presented, but not the new ones. So if there's something in general fund budget that you want to vote on separately, but then we have it as a whole.
So.
The reason I was asking, based on the feedback that we've gotten from Dr. Garcia.
Well, at this point, we haven't a go ahead.
Based on the feedback that we've gotten from Dr. Garcia unwilling to to vote for the additional funds that the Board of Health, which I am willing to vote for the funds for affordable house and land acquisition to as Supervisor Gruhava said, establish the.
Chair Bronson, just to clarify, those two items, we have additional items on the agenda specifically addressing those two. In this item, I was concerned about the possibility of passing some of the are in the agenda from individual supervisors and not and and not being able to accommodate if those items were because of the ceiling. But I think that we've established that we can do that carry forward in other funds. And so right now, I'm comfortable with passing tax rate and the ceiling. And then we can discuss, you know, some of the other line we might add or change.
At the time of final adoption.
Correct.
At the time of final.
Then we also have the ability throughout the year, I think, to ask staff.
Well, yeah, if there are reserve fund balance available.
Correct.
That is not.
Correct.
Madam Chair, aren't those items that Supervisor Gruhava speaking to listed in the agenda at later time?
They are.
Wouldn't that be a proper time to?
Well, no, I mean, it's part of the budget. So as courtesy, I move that forward. But as I understand what Supervisor Gruhava just indicated, she is willing to well, let me do this. We really need a motion so we have a discussion. I'm going to move that we adopt the for fiscal year 2022, 23, we adopt for the total budget, $1 billion. That used to be a big number, not anymore. $1,902,712,979 for an effective rate of .065. Do I have a second?
And those are the amounts that were originally presented?
Correct.
You have a second?
There's motion and a second. Now, back to Sir Scott's concern, we now are adopting the ceiling on the is so the tax rate cannot exceed that tax rate I indicated, which is $5.0652. Now, for final budget, we can have a discussion both in terms Supervisors Gruhava and Supervisor Heinz are recommending and trying ways to put those items in budget without raising the tax rate, which means there's going to have to be some things that were intended as funded being decreased. But I think our concentration is going to provide us with information, sure, if I'm incorrect, correct me, with information if we were to adopt what Supervisor Heinz and Supervisor Gruhava are recommending, we have to cut somewhere else and admin with us those options at that time. And then at this point, at that point with the option, you we will be able to vote on those items separate. So it's as clear as matter, you have I.
Correct.
Comfortable with that explanation.
I think if you set the cap today for the expenditure limits and the tax rate, we can't we want to put the items in, we will bring them back with recommendations of where you need to cut. If you could.
Or if we want to cut, I mean, that can be voted on separately. Okay, so we have a and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
On item?
We're on the. We're on the, we are now adopting the adoption of the tentative budget, item 13. Okay. Roco.
Supervisor Christie.
Yes.
Supervisor Grahalva.
Yes.
Supervisor Hines. Supervisor Scott.
Supervisor Hines.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thumb up.
Chair Bronson.
Yes, by your vote, unanimous vote, motion carries. We now move on debt service, item number 14. Hearing, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on this item at this time? If not, I move closed public hearing and approve debt service budget, tentative budget for 2022, '23 of $99,266,560 for an effective tax rate of 3.2. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Hearing on, Roco.
Supervisor Christie.
Yes.
Supervisor Grahalva.
Yes.
Supervisor Hines. Supervisor...
Yes.
Chair Bronson.
Yes, by your unanimous, motion carries. It's 10:47. Let's take about a 10... Oh, why don't we take a 10-minute break? Well, let's do it this way. Everybody needs a 10-minute break. And after that, I will come back quickly to go into... All right.
Do you want to make that presentation? Introduce yourself to those who don't know you.
Hello, Board. My name is Rick Kimball. Board members, I have met Supervisor Graham and Supervisor Scott. I'm with Senator Sinema's office here in Tucson. Not so much of a presentation, more of this introduction. Since things have opened up again, I'm here and available. It's kind of our commitment to Southern Arizona right now. Especially when we had the public works presentation earlier today with infrastructure is something we're really pushing on and getting money for Southern Arizona, which I will send some of the numbers that we have gotten to the clerk. So you have it. But if there's anything that you think we can't, our office can help with, especially in the grant world and getting some of those federal grants, we're equipped to do that. And any other projects or assistance you can think of. I'm down the street, about four minutes away. And Mr. Enriquez has my email. And I'm available to help out whatever you can. And I'll see you Chairman Bronson Thursday at the ABCC.
You will.
Yeah, I will be there for that. If there's any questions.
Madam Chair, aren't you the relative of Richard Kimball that was an attorney here in town that ran for Congress?
Not that Kimball, no. I do have an uncle, Richard Kimball, but he was Phoenix Fire Department.
Okay.
But I'm a Phoenix.
Well, it's much better that he's a Phoenix Fire Department because this Kimball, I'm afraid, was a Democrat, so.
Lovely.
No, I'm a Phoenix native, but I've been in Tucson now since 1998, so.
Just one last clarification.
Nope, nope, unfortunately. But any other questions from the board and the supervisors have any questions for me?
No. Chairman Bronson?
Yes.
So this board passed a resolution regarding the proposed route of I-11. And so I know Senator Sinema has expressed some support of that, but I just wanted to make sure to get over the resolution that this board passed for one against I-11. Make sure that you understand that because I also know that the city of Tucson passed a resolution as well.
Yep, I'll make sure that they see it, but I'll pass that along as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to now move back to executive session on the addendum agenda. We have two executive session items, items four and five. I'd entertain a motion to move into exec.
I'll move.
I'll second.
You shall move.
There's a motion and a second. If there are no objections, we'll convene in exec and reconvene in regular session at the sound of the gavel. Do you have your email? We could get board members to return to their, to the dais. Come on, boys.
We don't have, we don't have anybody else, though.
We don't have Rex yet. Supervisor Christie is here. And Supervisor Scott is here. And I think Supervisor Hines is about ready to join us. And that brings us back to the regular agenda. And we're now the board of supervisors sitting as other boards, library district board, items 15 and 16. If nobody wishes to divide the question, I'll move those items. Oh, I got to do exec, but I got that motion. Let's get that done. Okay, I was waiting actually for Supervisor Hines.
The library district, do you want a second?
Yeah.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. We had two executive session items. Ms. Lucash.
Chair Bronson, members of the board. Addendum item four for executive session concerning Lake v. Hobbs. The Pima County Attorney's Office seeks direction to proceed as instructed in executive session.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any objection?
I object.
One objection. Supervisor Christie objects. Item five, Ms. Lucash.
Item five was for advice only.
All right, so there's no action necessary. We've done the Library District items 15 and 16.
Did we do the 16?
Yep, we did both.
Oh, we did? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I moved both. I asked if you wished to divide the question. Nobody did.
You did, yes, okay, thanks.
Okay, I'm not going, I'm not losing.
I'm not.
Okay. All right, consent. Anybody wish to divide an item on the consent?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
I'd like to pull items two, three, nine, 10, 13, and 19.
Nine, 10, 13, and 19?
Correct.
Anybody else? All right, I'll move the remainder of consent.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. Moving on to item two. On the consent, Facilities Management El Rio, I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just basically want some information on this. This is a, number two is, El Rio is, is leaving, excuse me. El Rio is providing, being provided, leased space. And then there's also, the next one is the termination of lease by Banner Medical. Why is Banner Medical leaving?
We can't hear you. I don't know what's wrong with the mic.
Okay, well, there we go. Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie. The Banner, again initially started with University Medical Center and others over the years, have leased a part of the first floor of the Abrams facility. And they have been, they were previously providing a variety of clinical services and in addition to some space through the University of Arizona as well as Banner. And their, the desire has been to move that lease to El Rio to provide the basic clinical services that Banner was providing. It is a negotiation that occurred between El Rio and Banner. So the, the services to the community will continue at that location simply under the direction of El Rio rather than Banner.
And Madam Chair, Ms. Lester, can you tell me what the original lease terms were with Banner on, on this site, on this property, this space?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I, I'm, I cannot, the, the initial agreements go back to 2004 and they have been amendments over time through UPH, UAH, et cetera. I'm more than happy to provide the history of that and what those leases look like in a follow-up memo.
I'd appreciate that, and I just want to note, and I apologize, I took these out of order. But it says that El Rio will be leasing that space for $2.7 million over five years. For a nonprofit medical service entity, that seems like an awful lot of money for them to be on the hook for. Is that money that is coming through grants? Is it coming through?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I don't know how they plan to fund it. It has been a contractual negotiation between Banner and El Rio, and we have simply been approving the, the site at least.
Okay, and you'll provide me with the original lease with Banner? And thank you, that ends my questions on those items, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay. If there, I'll call the question then. Any objections on item two? Hearing none, motion carries. Item three, I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second, Supervisor Christie.
I took them both together.
Okay, so you're fine?
Yeah.
No further discussion?
No further discussion.
Any objections?
No.
Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to item nine, properties, I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to look at a little background. The amendment adds $2.8 million for a cumulative not to exceed contract amount of $7.6 million effective May 17th, with two six-month renewal options remaining. This again is to provide a second hotel, the Comfort Suites, and decrease the daily room rate. My first question is, I was under the impression that Comfort Suites was owned and operated by the City of Tucson.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, it is not owned by the City of Tucson. There have been some of the services that have been provided and paid for by the City of Tucson, but it has all been funded, again, through the FEMA dollars, the federal dollars that we have been receiving. Some, and, and there's part of a subcontract agreement on some of the facilities with the City of Tucson.
So now the county is, so now the county is purchasing that property?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, no, we are not purchasing anything. This is the continuation of the block purchase of rooms. We rent out rooms. This is part of the, the information that we've been providing the board on the update regarding the response to the legal asylum seekers. Some are in a congregate shelter at Casalitas and some move to a non-congregate at one of the hotels for which we rent space when we, we get a block rate. And then we have been, all of the funding heretofore has been provided by the federal government through FEMA grants.
It's confusing because again in the background, it says on January 21st, 2022, the procurement director approved an amendment which added a second hotel, Comfort Suites. So my first blush to say added meant bought, bought. It's not bought.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, it is not. We added a block of rooms at a second hotel facility.
And throughout these expenditures and all of these hotels and sheltering entities and actions, we were always told that the asylum seekers are just passing through. Yet the administrating departments are health and community workforce and development. What does just passing through have to do with community workforce and development?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, as Mary mentioned, what we've discussed in the past is that we have used, the majority of the, the rooms had been initially purchased for the asylum seekers, and they are for a few days. When we have capacity for which were already purchased those rooms, they have then been utilized by the community workforce development by our evictions program. For those who have been facing eviction, we do provide the ability for some of those individuals to stay in the rooms using a different contract and funding available.
And it does go on to say in the program goals and outcomes, providing safe hotel sheltering for COVID-19 exposed and/or COVID-19 positive asylum seekers, including medical care needed during quarantine and isolation in preparation for onward travel. So it goes, goes on to say that the, it also is adding additional hotel shelter services for individuals experiencing or at risk of experiencing homelessness due to evictions. This is over and above the COVID issues. So is one hotel for sick asylum seekers and one hotel for those experiencing homelessness? And since we have a co-mingled contract here, are the populations co-mingled as well or separate?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor.
Should it be two different contracts?
We have one contract with the hotel. And then they provide two different buckets of services, which is the delineation of those who are asylum seekers and those are who have been the eviction prevention programs. The, we do have separate facilities for those who have been either test positive or have family members test positive so that they are separated from the individuals, another population that have been, that are negative or have.
So two, two different communities, the homeless and the COVID, are separated in two separate facilities?
Yes, sir.
And this was an action by the procurement department. Why didn't the procurement folks come before the Board of Supervisors to add the additional Comfort Suites allocations?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I'm happy to bring that back, but I believe we have brought every contract to the board at each step. And this is simply an extension.
So this has been brought before the board, this specific one?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. And which property recently came before the Board of Supervisors for rezoning? Was it the Red Roof Inn or the Comfort Suites?
Chair Bronson, I'm going to turn to Mr. DeBonis or Dr. Garcia. I don't, I don't recall which, if anyone came for rezoning.
I thought it was Red Roof Inn.
Supervisor Christie and Madam Chair, board members. There was a request, comprehensive plan amendment that was before this board and did receive approval on the Red Roof Inn property.
So one of these allocations is going to a facility, the Red Roof Inn, that's already been designated in this allocation for either COVID-related sheltering or homeless sheltering. Is that, is that consistent with the request for the rezoning?
Supervisor Christie, Madam Chair. The request for rezoning was unrelated to the current uses. The property owner is contemplating a sale of that and the purchaser, the prospective purchaser of that is envisioning transitioning from the hotel use into short-term apartment-type housing.
So that was my, my last question is, how does this contract impact the new owners that you just referred to, their plan to construct affordable housing?
Supervisor Christie and Madam Chair, I do not think that it does impact it. When that rezoning case was in front of the board, the representative on behalf of the owner was aware of the current uses of the property and did not indicate that they in any way conflicted with or compromised their future plans for the property.
So just to clarify, the new owner is going to develop affordable housing in a facility that is being allocated funds to house COVID-related illness folks or homeless folks? But that's supposed to be all-inclusive in affordable housing construction?
Supervisor Christie and Madam Chair, the two uses are unrelated. So there's a current use that's taking place. The owner intends to transition from that current use of the hotel, which we then have currently contracted for utilization of, into a new use that would be short-term temporary housing.
Do you see that there's like three or four different strains going in through this whole process between affordable housing, rezoning, COVID-related, homeless-related, all adding up now to $7.8 million?
Supervisor Christie and Madam Chair, I think that we've characterized that there are current uses and future proposed uses that have those elements that you mentioned. How that relates to this particular contract, I can't speak directly to other than I believe that the future uses are separate from the current contracted use of that facility by Pima County.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion? Any?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Scott.
Mr. DeBonis, is it possible that the Comfort Suites was added to the current arrangement in anticipation of the sale of the Red Roof Inn? Or does that not enter into the equation?
Supervisor Scott, Madam Chair, I do not believe that those two were related. There's somewhat of a coincidental set of circumstances that are occurring here and that the, the need for additional room capacity was separate from what was happening as a result of the rezoning.
But if the, the board's already approved the rezoning, so in the future, the Red Roof Inn is not going to be available for the purposes it's currently being used for. But the addition of Comfort Suites would mean that that property would be available for the current use. That's, that's what I was asking.
Madam Chair and Supervisor Scott, yes, those rooms at the, the Comfort Suites would be available. And my, my only point is that I do not believe that the two were tied together in that the future proposed use generated the need for the, the Comfort Suites contract. I think that the current volumes dictated that such even prior to the rezoning.
All right, thank you.
There's no further discussion. I'll call the question. Any objections? One objection from Supervisor Christie. Hearing no further objection, motion carries for one. Moving on to item 10, I'll move the item. Motion and a second, Supervisor Christie.
This item, Madam Chair, is, is rather creepy in my estimation, in my investigation. It has to do with a firm called Virgin Pulse. And we are spending somewhere around $800,000.
This is a company named Virgin Pulse and the taxpayers are going to be expending somewhere in the neighborhood of $800,000 to implement this program. And I find it extraordinarily invasive. And the, the first item I want to discuss or at least bring up is that this is to provide for employee wellness service, health benefit, self-insurance fund, yet it's being administered through the Information Technology Department, not anything from the Health Department. And this is designed for employee wellness. And I just want to read some of the website information on Virgin Pulse. And it says, "Virgin Pulse engages in a total employee well-being solution that drives sustainable long-term behavior changes, increases productivity, and strengthens workforce cultures by providing daily engagement tools, personalized program recommendations, targeted communications, and daily habit-building activities. The integrated platform drives higher participation across all your implementation and ongoing client success, members' engagement, and member support. The product descriptions below may be updated from time to time to change, to change features. This can activate your entire community with insights and support initiatives with human interactions, peer group programming navigation, health literacy, and more." It goes on to describe how this program enhances our data and AI predicts individual needs. Then I go to the website information and it shows the, the ratings of the users, the employees. And there's a substantial amount of responses from employees that have been involved with Virgin Pulse. There must be, I don't know, 25 or 30 responses. I won't bother everybody with reading them. But practically every one is negative. The employees hate it. And I'm wondering, is this a plan with, that since it's not being administered through the Health Department or Human Resources but under IT, is this going to be a mandatory plan for all employees?
Chair Bronson and Supervisor Christie, if I could give a little background. It's on IT because it is a software package that is being purchased and is ultimately utilized. on IT because it is a software package that is being purchased and is ultimately utilized, you know, through the Health Department. For employees, if you've been on our health or wellness pages, you have an opportunity to, to do a variety of activities that allow you to get points that can decrease the amount that you pay in your insurance. For example, there's a monthly quiz that you can look at. There are, there's a quarterly wellness guide. You can submit points for getting exercise each day. There's things like that. That has all been part of a package that the Health Department has utilized, one company for a period of time, to add up, and all those, you know, smoking cessation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This is simply the new company that would be providing that. Again, it's through HR, it's through our wellness and benefits program for employees to get healthier and hopefully then to decrease what they're paying in insurance.
And is it mandatory?
No.
This is purely voluntary?
Yes.
And you mentioned the incentives for quitting smoking and the behavioral changes that this program is trying to implement in, in employees. Will there be disincentives if you don't sign up for it?
No.
And I just find something of this nature so pervasive in people's individual lives and freedom is buried on the consent calendar. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have.
Okay. There's no further discussion. I'll call the question. Any objections?
I object.
One objection. Hearing no further objections, motion carries four to one with Supervisor Christie voting nay. Moving on to item 13, I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Supervisor Christie.
This is another item that is related to an earlier agenda item that we just discussed. This is a FEMA Emergency Food and Shelter Program National Board to provide for humanitarian relief, from the humanitarian relief fund, an award grant of $1.6 million. This is an ongoing contractual supplement that has been awarded over some time now by this board. Just for everybody's information, under this program and under these actions by this board, in one year, this deals with the Border Coalition Partnership, the city of Tucson, Catholic Community Services in Pima County. This coalition has authorized in one year $11,659,000 under this Border Coalition Partnership, and I'll address some of those issues later. But this again is a sheltering issue with asylum seekers. The Border Operations Partnership is in provision of humanitarian aid to asylum seekers as well as to prevent street releases and prevent and mitigate COVID-19 spread. And I'm not saying the one, I'm not the one saying that asylum seekers are associated with COVID spread. It says it right here in the benefits in the, in the contract. The metrics collected for the grant are number of asylum seekers sheltered and fed average length of stay. I'd like to see the metrics on that if I could. And the $1.6 million grant, the grant award allows the county to cover costs incurred from January 1st of 2022 through December 31st of 2025. Are we going to be dealing with this issue this many years for only $1.6 million, as well as a, seems like a never-ending allocation program?
Chair Bronson and Supervisor Christie, the, if you, the number of individuals that we are seeing dropped in this community by the federal government is causing us to expend as a county approximately $1.6 million per month is the anticipated expenditures at this time. That is why we've been working very closely with FEMA. We currently have a $35 million request to make sure that while it is the people of Pima County that are responding to this federal concern, to make sure that it is the federal government that continues to provide the funding for this. Absent the ability to provide food and emergency shelter and transportation for these individuals, the method used is what is called street release, and that is when either DHS component, ICE, or CBP drops individuals in the community, sometimes at an airport, sometimes at a bus station, or sometimes at simply locations within the community. Herefore, the board has indicated that the policy, it makes better sense to make sure that these individuals have a place to go and not be released simply within the community.
To the tune of $11.6 million.
As paid by the federal government.
And out of that $11.6 million, which is being spent by the Border Coalition Group, each one I'm sure is involved in the administrative costs, how much percentage is taken and given to each one of those entities out of that $11 million for administrative costs?
Chair Bronson and Supervisor Christie, I'm happy to get you a report that provides the breakout of how those funds have been spent.
Especially the administrative costs?
Yes, sir.
That's all, Madam Chair. Thank you.
If there are no further discussion, I'll call the question. Any objections?
I object.
One objection, Supervisor Christie. No further objections. Motion carries four to one. Moving on to item 19, cancellation of uncontested precinct committing men races. I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Supervisor Christie.
Very quickly, I thought we just voted on this issue at either the last meeting or the meeting before. Why are we voting on another candidate at this point here? What, what's causing this action?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, it is ongoing that we are receiving nomination papers, and if the position is not filled, then we will ask that the election be canceled for that and that you appoint if it's just one person. And I believe there will be another one coming forward in the next meeting as well.
Isn't there a cutoff point or anything like that?
There is. I don't have that information with me, but I'll be happy to get that information to you.
So we can expect more action needed on, on these termination, or?
As received.
Yes, sir. I know for sure that you will see another one for the next meeting, but I will get you to cut off information.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
There's no further discussion. Any objections? Hearing non, motion carries unanimously. Going to go out of order quickly because we've had our Pima County Public Fiduciary sitting here. Justin is in attendance. It's item 13 on the Addendum Agenda, Appointment of a Pima County Public Fiduciary. I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. And any objections? Hearing non, motion carries. Welcome aboard, Justin.
Hi, Justin. You going to say something or no?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
We got through the consent. Let's move on and to... We did I-18, we did 19, and now we're on 20. County Administrator's update. Ms. Lesher.
Thank you, Chair Bronson and members of the board. Just a couple of quick items I would like to highlight. Friday, this Friday, May 20th, from 5:30 to 7:30 is the Fifth Annual Graduation Ceremony, excuse me, for our Career Online High School, which is part of Pima County Public Library. It's a terrific event, and so for those who might be able to attend, it's at Flowing Wells Library this Friday, and lots of fun. And, excuse me. Also, just want to congratulate our Pima County ECap, our Portion of the United Way campaign. It's the Employees Care About Pima County, and I want to announce that our employees this year earned the Circle of Excellence Award for the year. 61% of all county employees participated in the campaign this year, raising a little over $270,000. So thanks so much to, to all of our county employees who participated in that program. We talked earlier about mental health and some of the impacts, and want to just make people aware that we have a mini-grant program going out, our New Pathways for Health and Wellbeing for Youth. There's up to $10,000 available in mini-grants to help people who are addressing young people's health, mental health, and well-being. Applications are due May 31st, but it's all available on the website, and we would really encourage folks to take a look at that. One last shout-out reminder, the, the Sunday, May 1st, which was the last day of the Pima County Fair, was a record-breaking day. There were more people at the county fair that day than ever in the history of the county fair. So I've said it before, but huge shout-out to our partners who are running the county fair. They do such a terrific job for the people of this county, and we thank them. As it was mentioned, it's Public Works Week, and just a reminder that our DOT management team's hosting a barbecue, employee appreciation, and that's on the 19th. Encourage you to stop by, and just as part of my comments, but personal privilege, I guess, happy birthday to Melissa.
Yes.
Happy birthday.
She makes these meetings wonderful, so thank you. And that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Did you bring cupcakes?
Hours ago. I don't know where they are now.
All right. Then let's move on to item 21, Recommendation for Additional Sick Leave for Those Negatively Affected by the April 2020 Stay-at-Home Order. I'll move the item.
A second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Objections, hearing non, motion carries. Moving on to item 22, Modifications to Employee COVID-19 Vaccination Requirement. It's in response to House Bill 2498. Move the item.
A second.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
I've stated my objection to this mandate for required vaccinations. We have legislation that's coming up that obviously is going to create another wrench in the works of trying to manage this before the legislature, which has already made its decision, actually comes into effect, which I think is a poor policy decision. It's a punitive action that is to punish people for not taking the vaccine, to make sure that they know that they're not welcome to work in Pima County if they're not vaccinated. It sends a bad message, particularly when we can't seem to retain and attract employees. We advertise that this is, Pima County's a great place to work, yeah, as long as you follow our directives, and that directive may go against what your personal beliefs are, but nonetheless, we won't hire you unless you follow what we say. It leads, I think, a very disruptive, disrespectful, and negative impact on our community and our ability to retain and recruit, recruit talent that we need so desperately in Pima County. One constituent wrote me, and it is a great question, and I'm hoping it can be addressed right now. In the memo dated May 12th of 2022, Ms. Lesher recommended extending the vaccination surcharge on employees for another year since, quote, "It is too early to assess the economic impact this has had on the county's employee-related health expenditures, especially as we begin to see the impacts of long COVID-19." Questions are, are unvaccinated employees the only ones that may experience long COVIDs? It's been well over two years now, and since the start of COVID, and there is no data? If the study concludes no excessive cost by unvaccinated employees to the county, will we get our money back after being unfairly penalized? And he doesn't express positivity on that event happening anyway, but I think those are some good questions to be addressed. Are unvaccinated employees the only ones that may experience long COVID? Been well over two years, and there's no data? If the study concludes no excessive cost by unvaccinated employees to the county, will the employees get their money back after being unfairly penalized? Could you address those?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I will turn to Dr. Garcia to ask some of the medical questions, but I can say the question about whether or not individuals are reimbursed would be a policy decision that we can come back and talk to the board about because it's the, the, those are costs that we looked at related to the overall assessment of fees, but let Dr. Garcia speak to what we've seen.
Before I, we go to Dr. Garcia, how many employees are paying the insurance penalty?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, about 280.
280 are paying the insurance penalty. Doctor, thank you, Dr. Garcia.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, really good question. I will remind you that the employee surcharge, the insurance surcharge, has only been in place since November of last year. So the employee surcharge has actually been in place for six months. That is part of the reason why at this time, we're not able to get back to you with regards to whether this has been overall a cost-savings effort for, for our self-insured program or not. You are indeed correct. Both vaccinated and unvaccinated people can develop long-term COVID. The, there is, there is good evidence that suggests that, that people who are vaccinated experience that to a lesser extent, but you're absolutely right, both can develop long-term COVID. I think what we would like to do, what we, what Administrator Lesher proposes to do is, in conjunction with HR and in conjunction with our Benefits Manager, Aetna, to relook at this policy question and be able to come back to you with a factual basis on which to either continue to levy that surcharge or to eliminate it. At this time, we don't have that analysis to be able to provide that to you, since this has only been in place for six months.
Do you have an idea when that might be available?
We said, Administrator Lesher says in her memo, six months was when we would come back. At that point, we would have almost a year's worth of data, and we would be able to say something much more definitive.
But it is going to be examined, and it will be brought back before the board as a policy issue.
That is what the Administrator said in her memo, yes.
Thank you. And just to conclude with more constituent comments on this issue, also, please immediately reinstate with back pay any employees who were terminated or shuffled around to another job as punishment for exercising their right to informed consent when they refused the COVID-19. So maybe in that policy recommendation back, you might want to look at the rehiring of formerly fired or terminated employees who refused to be vaccinated. I think that would be a very helpful element in that report, once the data that you are referring to is compiled. Another comment, Pima County is claiming that the unvaccinated employees are not safe to the public or their coworkers. It is a known fact that vaccinated people still get and spread COVID, and I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this. I'll look for the report, and I'm hoping you'll include the individuals who've been terminated as part of that discussion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And if there's no further discussion.
Chair Bronson.
Supervisor.
I just wanted to ask administration to explore the idea of giving our employees more points, the wellness points, if they're boosted, because I know we talked about incentives, non-incentives, and so we're, I understand that that idea might cause more stress to our budget, but I do think points to encourage people to stay current on the vaccines and boosters would be helpful. Okay. Thanks.
All right. There's no further discussion.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Thank you. Dr. Garcia, it is the case that vaccinated people can not only spread the virus, but, but get the virus, but are there other reasons that even given those facts, that it is still a good idea to require vaccinations for our employees? And I appreciate in that response, your response, if you could address things like viral load or other factors that, that make vaccination still a, a positive, positive mandate?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Scott, clearly, clearly, one of the things that we understand now, that despite the fact that indeed those of us who are vaccinated can still have a risk for becoming infected with COVID infection, with COVID virus, one of the things that we understand more deeply now than we have ever before is that the consequences of those infections is very, very different among the vaccinated versus the unvaccinated. Among the vaccinated... Among the vaccinated, those infections tend to be shorter term and self-limited, and rarely, although sometimes, lead to hospitalization and death. What we are seeing, again, as a very consistent finding, not just in this county, but across counties in the United States and across the world, is that among individuals who are unvaccinated, the likelihood of hospitalization and death is tremendously increased. This is regardless of the particular variant that is circulating in the community at that time. These facts, these issues are not, are relatively well settled, and I don't think are going to change in the near future.
Thank you. If there's no further.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. And I'd point out for the public that this board took a very nuanced position with regard to which of our employees were required to be vaccinated. It was only employees that were working with vulnerable populations, not only because those vulnerable populations were more at risk, but so were the employees who worked with those populations. We rejected a wholesale employee mandate. We also rejected telling other employers in the area that they had the mandate vaccines. And I really find the state legislation that's referenced in this item to be an intrusion on our authority, not only to do what's best for our employees, but also as the regional public health authority.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Just a last question for clarification. Ms. Lesher, the 228 employees that are being penalized for not taking the vaccine, are they, all those 228 employees, working explicitly with vulnerable communities?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I don't believe so, but I'm happy to provide you.
We just heard from Supervisor Scott saying that this policy was only a nuanced position, only going to vulnerable community, working employees, but you're indicating that, no.
No, I'm indicating I don't know. And so let me please check that for you. I believe that's the policy, but I want to confirm that and get that back to you.
You believe that might be an erroneous amount?
I do not. Let me get that back. I'll be happy to follow up.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Just to clarify, I was referring to the vaccine mandate and which employees were required to be vaccinated.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I don't mean to be doing this, but you just indicated that all of the vaccine mandates were required by those employees working with vulnerable communities. We don't know that. That's my point. Thank you.
I'm happy to get the information, but there's a difference between those that are required to be vaccinated because they work with vulnerable populations and those who are paying the surcharge for healthcare. And those are two different groups of individuals, and I'm happy to get you all that information.
Yep.
And I appreciate that, because I was referring to the former group in my comments.
Yeah, I would like to see the breakdown, and that's important on clarifying this issue. Thank you.
All right. If there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. Any opposition?
I oppose.
One opposition, one nay. If there's no further nays, motion carries four to one with Supervisor Christie voting nay. Moving on to item 20, excuse me, item 23, Petition for Relief of Taxes. I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Objections. Hearing non. Motion carries. Item 24, Revisions to Board of Supervisors' Policy Regarding the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System and Correction Officer's Retirement Plan Pension Funding. I'll move the item.
A second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Objections. Hearing non. Motion carries. Item 25, Revisions on Finished Business from 5/3. Staff recommends approval of the proposed revisions to the Board of Supervisors' Policy Number C 2.4. Board Policy on Non-Interference in Administrative Affairs. I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Yeah, going through this, and I'm hoping I'm wrong, but I just see a real mess with this entire addendum item. Under Human Resources, this is number 25, Revision of Board of Supervisor Policy. And first, it deals with Personnel Policy 8-112, which is regarding the retirement and return-to-work policy and procedure, adding language to identify state retirement systems and the requirements of notification and approval for employees who retire from the state retirement system and either return to work or continue to work. Modifications to policy in the next line, C.24, which is to remove manager and replace with administrator reflected throughout the policy. That policy, C.24, is the non-interference policy. We're first talking about revisions to the state retirement system, and then we're talking about the non-interference policy, which is only being suggested that we replace the term administrator with manager, but it doesn't go into any detail about whether or not we want to continue this policy or not. And then looking at the minutes of the meeting where this was discussed, the non-interference in administrative affairs was removed from the agenda. And then the revisions to personnel policy, which include 8-112, retirement system participation, was approved. So we've got not only Personnel Policy 8-112, or Board of Supervisors' Policy C.2.4-2, and Items 2.3, all of these, both of them, they all should be treated as separate items. And under C.2.4, the non-interference policy, I don't wish to place a sunset provision since it's already expired on June, since 1993. So I'm totally confused on what this whole agenda item is, where it belongs, and what we're dealing with.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, if you recall at the last meeting, one of the things that occurred is that we brought the two policies, and it appeared that they had been blended together, as you see, there were the two items. I asked that they be bifurcated because there was confusion by having the two listed on the agenda item together, and we asked that it be continued so that we could bifurcate that issue. In continuing it, both of the items came back in the same way, but action was taken on the one issue. The 8.111, 8-111, was taken at the last meeting, and we asked to bring back simply the non-interference discussion. And looking at that, the only, it appeared the only request, the only change that needed to be made or recommended to the board was a change of title, because we wanted to continue the non-interference language on behalf of the board and make, keep that in the board policy. Therefore, we struck the sunset clause, because we didn't, I believe the board does not want the non-interference clause to sunset and change the title, and that was the only thing we needed to do. But this confusion came up at the last board, because the two items were on the agenda together. I asked that they be bifurcated and come back simply for the discussion today on C.2.4.
One item was removed from the agenda, correct? As the minutes state? Non-interference in administrative affairs.
Correct. C.2.4. And that's why today it says, "The staff recommends the proposed revisions to board policy C.2.4 on non-interference."
And how about C.2.3? C.2.3 states, again, the Pima County Board Policy on Non-Interference in Administrative Affairs. This is an entirely new policy. "No county employees or appointed officer shall take any action based on an order, instruction, or request for action by any individual member of the Board of Supervisors or any member of the supervisor's staff in violation of the above described ordinance." This is a whole different area, and these, of course, I should clarify, these are summaries, not the actual minutes.
I don't know what C.2.3 is not on today's agenda. C.2.4 is the only item on today's agenda for the clarification.
And on C.2.4.
Correct.
You're merely just saying we should change the name from manager to administrator, and it's already ended in '93. And you want to install a sunset clause when it's already expired? That, I'm confused.
What we brought back, Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, it has been our understanding that the board wished to keep their non-interference policy.
Where was that?
That was said at the last meeting.
I don't believe it was, because if that was the case, we would have had a very robust discussion about why, I think, we, under a lot of the current circumstances, we should keep that interference clause. I don't remember any discussion on it.
And I believe what we were trying to do is keep the non-interference clause.
Right.
That what is, before the board today in C.2.4, it was a, it's a, almost a Scribner's error, just to simply change the title, and the significant piece was simply to remove the sunset clause, which means that therefore, the non-interference board policy, as it has been in place with the board, would remain in place in its current form.
So, but both are non-interference related, C.2.4 and C.2.3?
I do not have C.2.3 on today's agenda to discuss.
No, it's only C.2.4.
Right. And I'm speaking to C.2.4, which is the Board Policy on Non-Interference in Administrative Affairs.
So if you could define what that particular revision is all about?
I think she did.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, our hope today was that by removing the sunset clause, C.2.4, which is the Board Policy on Non-Interference, remains intact as stated and articulated by this board.
So we're acknowledging that it has expired in 1993?
No.
No. I don't see that anywhere. I guess I would, I would turn to legal counsel for some assistance with that. When we reviewed the policy, we saw that there was a sunset clause. It had never been adhered to or looked at, which is why we felt if we removed the sunset clause, we would simply then be allowing this board to continue with that non-interference clause.
It was basically a Scribner's issue.
That is my understanding, and should the Board of Supervisors wish to maintain a board policy on non-interference, I believe that it can do so today by approving C.2.4 with the elimination of the sunset clause.
And non-interference is defined as not allowing any supervisor to engage or otherwise insert him or herself in the functions of any of the county administration activities?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, that is my understanding, but I would also turn to legal counsel to make sure that that is the appropriate legal determination or analysis.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I would suggest that the draft of the revision to the non-interference policy and the non-interference policy generally speak for themselves, but yes, it states that the Board of Supervisors shall not deal with an administrative officer or employee appointed by or under the county administrator, except through the county administrator.
Correct.
So what will we be voting for today?
Chair Bronson.
It's just the sunset clause. Supervisor Grahava.
I'm just wondering if we can separate the two items, and I can move item C.2.4?
Well, that's all that's on there.
No. I think where the confusion lies is that there's another, the attachment has HR revisions.
But the only thing on the board's agenda that we can vote on is C.2.4.
I think that's where the confusion is.
Could I suggest a continuation of this matter?
I'm going to move the, I move the item, and if there's.
I'll second.
Yeah, and so let's do, if there's no further discussion, let's do a roll call.
So Chair Bronson, just to be clear, we're voting on C.2.4, it's changing manager to administrator, and just reminding the board.
And eliminating the sunset clause.
Right, but reminding the board that the only employee that we can direct or talk to, aside from our own staff, is the county administrator.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Let's call the question. Any opposition?
I oppose.
One opposed. Supervisor Christie. There's no further opposition. Motion carries. We now move on. We've taken care of the rest of the items. So we're on hearings. Franchise License Permit, Items 28, 29, 30, 31. These are hearings. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us in opposition to these items at this time? I'm going to move to close public hearing then and approve the items. Is there a second?
I'm sorry, what items?
Franchise, 28, 29, 30, and 31.
I'll second, and I just wanted to add one comment, that we kind of say it pretty often, especially as dry as we are, but I would like it to sort of be just part of the practice, that approval from the appropriate fire district for fireworks permits is part of the standard, because.
It's pretty much what we do.
Right. No, but it's not, it's something that is done. It's not something that we actually state anywhere. So if there's any modifications to any sort of policies or anything like that that needs to come to the board, otherwise, what I'll do every time we pass one of these fireworks permits is to say, can we make sure that, you know, whoever gets the permit gets the appropriate approval from the fire district?
I think part of the issue there is that it's difficult for us to, there has to be some nexus for us to mandate that the fire departments do what we say, but let's, we can explore that.
Or even just checking in, because it's so dry everywhere, and we see all of these stories.
Well, and this is going to be one of the, it's already a horrible fire season. I agree.
Yep. Okay. Thanks.
And I want to note then, on item 28, there's a clerk's note that says must meet home occupation standards of 18.09.030, including but not limited to more, no more than five clients or deliveries in one day. If there are no further discussion, and if there are no objection, motion carries. We now move on to the addendum agenda, and items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 have been already taken care of. So we move on to item 6, Affordable Housing. Supervisor Grahava, since we sort of had that discussion in the budget, do you want to?
Well, this one is specifically asking for a presentation from experts in Pima County Affordable Housing. They recently identified nine county-owned parcels that could be used for affordable housing. The presenter said that the county owns many other parcels that have potential use for affordable housing, but they've not been identified or inventoried. So Pima County staff, this would be a request to have staff compile a complete inventory of surplus county-owned parcels and buildings that could be used for the development of affordable housing.
And that's by way of direction?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Lesher, you have direction.
Madam Chair, is there a discussion?
Go ahead.
I like the idea of taking an inventory of all of the Pima County properties, but I'm hoping that that inventory will be compiled first for examination, and then we can determine their locations of those properties before committing them to any kind of affordable housing. First of all, some of those properties could be next to, I don't know, sacred lands, or it could be next to public parks or state parks, national parks. Their location could be not in a very good place for any kind of housing. I have a problem with taking private, or excuse me, county land and then turning it over and overseeing affordable housing under the county's domain. I would rather see that if that is going to be the case, that we turn it to the private sector for development and under their investment, according to the affordable housing guidelines. So I kind of think we need to bifurcate this particular item and first address the compilation of the inventory to see exactly what lands we do have available, bring that to the board, look at that, and then we can always have the affordable housing issue discussed after we determine what lands we have available and what properties could be converted logically into any kind of housing. And just a couple of comments from constituents. It is logical that a complete inventory should be taken of surplus county-owned parcels and. should be taken of surplus county-owned parcels and buildings before any decisions can be made, and this should happen before any concrete decisions can be made affecting development, developing a budget and allocating millions towards purchase of county-owned parcels and buildings. We must know what you have before you know what you need, so I would hope that maybe we could kind of tweak this a little bit, and revisit the affordable housing issue after we receive the inventory.
Well, I don't think it's either or, I think it's both and.
Right, yeah, that's it.
It's what?
Both and, not either or.
I don't think, yeah, I don't, I don't see any issue with anything that you're saying. It's basically, let's see what we have available that could be used for affordable housing, and then this body would have to make a decision about that anyway.
So, you're not directing that, once we get that compilation, that that, those properties be turned into affordable housing?
No, I'm asking staff to compile a complete inventory of surplus county-owned parcels and buildings that could be used for the development of affordable housing, and then we would have to make that decision, is my assumption.
Could be, I won't split hairs on that, but I, if that's your understanding, or your interpretation, then I will agree to that, as long as we don't take any action on any property until we find out what we have.
No.
I think we're all in agreement there, and I think there was already something in the works, inventory, all county property. So, with that, let's move on to item 7, cost of living market adjustment, Supervisor Hines. I think that was sort of part of our, I mean, our budget discussion, but did you want to add something?
Oh. He has a video.
Good morning. So, apologies, I'm not able to participate in this meeting in a normal fashion due to a recent medical procedure. I would like to discuss item number 7 on the addendum agenda relating to the cost of living adjustment and salary increases for fiscal year '23 proposed by Administrator Lesher. As we all know, record inflation continues to plague our nation and, of course, our community, and I appreciate Administrator Lesher's recommendations, and I agree certainly in principle with the recommendation, but reflecting on the budget hearings that we had last week, for two days, we heard directors from every department in the county tell us about the difficulty that they're having with filling open positions, and with recruitment and retention of qualified county employees. In light of that feedback, I propose that we make these adjustments a bit higher, especially for those in the mid to lower salary tiers. I think that this is something that is important, that we do urgently, and that this is a reflection of their value to us in this community, and to the county, and it's something that we can do for all county employment, and also in an effort to make county employment not only an option for people, but the preferred option for people of southern Arizona. Therefore, I move item number 7 as it is written, and hope that one of my colleagues will see fit to second the motion, and hopefully support me in making these adjustments a bit higher. Thank you.
I will second for sake of discussion.
Discussion?
Item 7 was moved. So, my only concern is we've had, the total cost for this budget proposal is 16.7, is that correct? Because we have, the current is 12 million with 7.5 coming out of the budget, and the remainder being sort of absorbed with vacancies, is my understanding. So, what I read was this proposal is an additional 9.2 million from over what you've proposed.
Chair Bronson and Supervisor Grahalva, if I may, I'm looking at the May 16 memorandum, and reviewing it again, if you look at the second page, and I'm speaking of the general fund at this point, because we had indicated that we felt that some of the enterprise funds would absorb that, but that if, I realize if you look at the second bucket under entire cost, we have the 17,755,000, but when you look above that, we have the 17,75, we've indicated that there would be about two months savings, so we believe that the subtotal of the cost for, to the general fund would be 12,759. That is what we were looking at in the one scenario. So, the difference then, at this point, if you look at that scenario, what we have recommended in the current budget for increases is about 7.5 million, so I believe that it is closer to 5.2 million rather than the 10, but I, these were numbers that were coming together fast and furious yesterday, so I just want to be clear, if we move this forward for additional discussion, that I would like staff to do one more scrub and make sure that we have accurately presented what all the potential costs might be, and that we have an accurate reflection of what, how it might go up.
Okay, I think that's important, because I did read, one of the concerns that I had is, and I think Sheriff Nanos' memo sort of touched on it, is when you differentiate the increase so much from like 8 to 5, that you end up causing compression issues inadvertently, because you have people that are, have two different job classifications that are very close together in compensation. And so, I, you know, because we have the vacancies that we've talked about, and the county is not alone in any of that, every large organization has the same issues, looking at salary parity, and the fact that we are still waiting on the salary information from HR, I know that that study is still ongoing, and so those are some of the issues that I have, and then looking at, you know, where the cutoffs are for these different percentages. I mean, I like the idea, I like, I like County Administrator Lesher's idea as well of, you know, doing the percentages, and different, differentiating that depending on how much an employee is making. I'm just concerned that I'm kind of putting together numbers, you're kind of putting together numbers, I'm a little worried about what the total cost will be.
At least you're worrying about numbers, I appreciate that.
A little bit, just a little.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor.
So, am I hearing that perhaps you'd like to do some more refining of the proposal and come back to the board?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, what I would like to do is make sure that we have accurately captured the exact cost of the proposal as identified by Supervisor Hines, and make sure that we have given you the correct numbers in what the potential cost might be.
And in order to do that, it would have to be brought back before the board?
We'll get another memo out to you very soon.
Okay, and in that refining of all the numbers and of all the programs, could you include in that the number of raises that county employees have received in the last four years, automatic and otherwise, and what that percentage amounts to, from the beginning of, say, four years ago, four budget years ago, to the current, the percentage of raises, and the number of raises?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, we will be sure to add that to the memo.
Thank you very much.
All right, there was a motion and a second. I think at this point, it's more in the form of a direction?
Yeah, mostly because I'd like to make sure that our numbers are accurate.
Okay, so then what?
I can withdraw my motion?
Okay.
Do you want to go ahead and do that?
Yeah.
Or my second, and then we'll...
Yeah, he's withdrawn, so, okay. Then you'll come back to us with the information, so before we vote on something we actually understand the complexity and the bottom line. All right, moving on to item 8, Supervisor Grahalva.
This was the item, thank you, Chair Bronson, this was the item that I was talking about, and it's really discussion direction or act and, and or action. One would be to allocate 2 million from an appropriate place in the budget for the purchase of open space for conservation in accord with the Sonoran Desert Conservation Plan. The Office of Sustainability and Conservation would identify the lands as priorities for purchase, and then part of that, another item would be allocate 5 million from an appropriate place in the budget for development of affordable housing in accord with recommendations of the Pima County Affordable Housing Task Force, and the direction of a community workforce and development department.
So, that's just by way, I think we're doing this by way of direction?
Well, it's fine with me, I just wanted to make sure that there was a majority of the board willing to support including those in the budget, so that's why I listed it there for action as well.
Okay, and I think that that decision, we were waiting on a memo from Ms. Lesher to give us the consequences, were this to be included, what had to be, what has to be cut?
Or where, or where in the budget it would come from, because one of, it could come from some of the COVID relief funding, like for open, perhaps open spaces, affordable housing is part of that, so just to kind of look at what we have available. And if we just want to go ahead and give that direction, then I can bring this item back, where we have that information.
All right, let's do it by direction, and...
Okay.
Okay, all right, then item 9 is public posting of Board of Supervisors Directed Memoranda and Correspondence, Supervisor Christie.
Yes, Madam Chair, I just want to verify and confirm that there, if there's been any change in the county administration policy of posting Board of Supervisor Directed Memoranda and Correspondence, we have, you know, several examples of memorandum that were not posted in what could be considered a timely manner, for instance, the issue with the constable. We have another one as the COVID premium pay provided issue, that was not posted in a timely manner. We have the termination report that seemed to be sporadic, but I just want to make it clear and have it confirmed here that there's been no change in policy as far as that posting goes, and a comment or two from the county administrator as to why these other ones were not posted in a timely manner.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I appreciate you bringing to our attention that those were not posted, all of them have been posted, and we have been making sure, working internally to make sure that all of the memos that are coming out get posted in a timely fashion, as you suggest. As you notice, I believe 13 some yesterday, were all posted by the close of business yesterday, and it's our job to make sure that those go up at the same time they come to you, and we will ensure that that continues. There has been no change to policy.
Okay, so basically, the timely manner is what kind of a timeframe from when you receive, you post it, or issue it?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, the idea is that it will be posted the same day that they are sent to you. Sometimes if they come out right at the end of the day, they might not get up to first thing this, the next morning, but that is, that is what we're looking to do.
Fair enough, thank you, Madam.
Thank you.
All right, thank you Supervisor. Okay, item 10, Vote Center Implementation Plan, Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm delighted our elections director is here, I just, basically, it's self-explanatory, the first part is anyway, if she could give us her own rendition and update as to where we stand on the issues facing her office on the implementation of the new vote centers.
You know, she's probably regretting that she ever moved to Pima County at this point.
Oh, it's early yet, so...
Okay, she'll still have a little more regrets, okay. Constance?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, there is not much to report on, in way of equipment. I did have a conversation with the vendor last week, and he guaranteed, we know how that is, he guaranteed that we would have 156 printers at the end of June, and the update I think I sent to Ms. Lesher indicated that 156 is enough for us to have at least one ballot printer in each vote center if we needed to go forward with that. As far as the other equipment, we don't have, we will not get those small voucher printers, that's not going to happen prior to the primary. I did speak with the vendor, they are exploring to other vendors for that product. The electronic poll books, we have all of those.
Which are the ones that we're not getting?
This, it's a small printer that prints a receipt with the voter's name and ballot style on it, so we can simply do that manually, so it's not critical to the process.
So, those aren't coming at all, it'll have to be done manually?
Yes, that's correct, they will not be here for the primary.
And how is your assumption of the smoothness of the, of the flow of all of this without those pieces of equipment?
It's not going to affect the process very much, it'll take a little bit of time for the poll book officer to write the information down, however, I'm not complaining about that, that's actually a double check, to make sure that they are actually getting the correct ballot, so even though it is a little bit of an inconvenience, I'm not actually complaining about that for this first go around. It will slow things down enough for them to get, not overly confident that everything is correct, and it will make them actually double check.
I didn't mean to interrupt the flow of your discussion, so proceed with the update.
Okay, and the electronic poll books, we, we are continuing to test those with a loner printer that we have from the recorder's office to see how the check-in process actually works, making sure that the, the flow of who we should check in, and whether or not is providing the correct information is correct, so we're testing that, we did a test last week, we have another one scheduled for this week, a third one scheduled for May 23 in conjunction with the recorder's office. The staff, David Wisely, and the IT staff, the recorder staff, are preparing to go out this week, no later than Thursday, to test the CradlePoint devices, which is our connectivity in the rural areas, so...
And what are you doing that test?
I don't have the exact date, I was with IT on yesterday, they are coordinating, but no later than Thursday this week, they will do that, so I should have an update no later than Friday, how that, excuse me, how that actually went, and so that test will be done, so we are still working on that, we are working through the flow of how things should actually work in the vote center, so we're doing practice runs to make sure that staffing and individuals know how to assess any issues that may arise in the vote center, so we're continuing to do that, as well as working on our training.
How is your staffing situation?
I still do not have any additional staff yet, so we are...
In particular, which, which positions are still lacking?
So, there is a supervisory position, that was the supervisor of the, the front office, managing candidate filings, campaign finance, and things of that nature, so we don't have that position filled yet, and there's a deputy position, which is actually not budgeted until July, that I really would love to have filled, need to have that filled, so that I can have some leadership in the office. So, right now, I'm just kind of filling in in all of those places to make sure they, the staff has guidance on what they need to do. As far as the additional training is concerned, the actual trainer from the company will be here the week of June 20 for three days, giving us extensive training on the backend, how things should work in the polling place, the vote center, and how to train our officers of elections to make sure that they understand the new technology and the workflow.
As we get closer and closer to the primary dates and the early voting ballots being sent out, as well as the general, I'll ask you the same question I asked the last time we talked, what now is keeping you awake at night?
Just making sure that I can have the bandwidth to make sure that I manage the staff and the process. As far as equipment that's not keeping me up at night, I will tell you that if, if we do not get the printers, I have asked staff to explore whether or not we can find any additional locations, if for some reason we needed to expand and not do a vote center, because I would prefer that the officers not have to handle as many ballot styles manually that is that they will have to handle. So, I'm asking them to take a look to see if they can find any locations, I should have an update to you by the end of week, or no later than first of next week as well, to let you know whether or not that's even feasible.
So, would that constitute as some sort of a backup plan?
It would, and we would have to come back before you and ask you to approve that we do some form of precinct voting.
Okay, I just want to share very quickly some constituent concerns that last year saw an increase in voting partiality due to appears ballots being mailed to all Pima County residents, there is concern about the security of the voting system being implemented. This is a new implementation and a new process, there's, they're very much in favor of perhaps, which I'll get to in a moment, a demonstration here at the Board of Supervisors that a demonstration would be needed. here at the Board of Supervisors that a demonstration would be needed and election integrity is vital for this country, state and county. My point of reading these is, as I'm sure you're aware, there's a great deal of issue and concern by many folks in the residents, particularly that I'm receiving in my office, and they're taking it very seriously. And turning to a demonstration, I'd like very much to have a voting center demonstration done right here in the boardroom at the first meeting in June.
Is that feasible?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, I think we can do a small demonstration.
I would volunteer as the first guy coming in to use a voting center, because I have never done it before and I would be grateful to be the guinea pig.
Yes, sir. We could do a small demonstration here, that, that will not be a problem. I, I think that, that is actually not a bad idea. That way you can feel, touch and feel the equipment.
And we can get all the interconnectivity and?
I'm happy.
Yes, we can, we can, we can bring a, a small setup. So let's say maybe two electronic poll books with the, the connectivity device and a printer.
A printer demonstration?
Yes.
That's on the first week, the first meeting in June, June 7th, I believe?
Yes, sir.
That'd be great.
We could definitely do that.
I will look forward to that and I thank you for your presentation and we'll look forward to more updates.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to item, item 11 now. Former county administrator's termination and severance payment. Supervisor Christie. Oh, wait, just a minute. We've been sitting a while. You want to take a 10-minute break?
Okay.
10-minute break, we'll see you around one.
We're back in regular session. And our item, next item on the agenda is item 11, former county administrator's termination and severance payment. And there was no severance pay, but Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate finding your April 7th letter acknowledging the receipt of Mr. Huckleberry's termination yesterday afternoon about 4:00, which was initially dated April 7th. I have a series of questions, and I'm going to rely on the county administrator to direct the source of where those questions can be answered. Many of these are already answered in some of the memorandum that we've received from the county administrator's office as well as from the chair's office. So it's just good to make sure that we cover all the bases. So let's begin from the beginning. And my first question is, what is the current status of Mr. Huckleberry's employment with Pima County?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, Mr. Huckleberry is not an employee of Pima County.
And is there a possibility that I could request that members of the Board of Supervisors receive a copy of Mr. Huckleberry's Personnel Action Form, his PAF?
Yes. Chair Bronson, yes, we're happy to send that to you. Got it. I believe we've got it with me, and we're happy just to-
You have it now?
We have, I have it now. We'll make a copy and get it to you.
Terrific. What is Mr. Huckleberry's termination status as both county administrator and county employee?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, Mr. Huckleberry is neither the county administrator or a county employee.
Is he anything?
As it relates to employment with Pima County, no, sir.
So as far as any kind of employment connections, they are not existent with Pima County and Mr. Huckleberry?
That is correct.
Has Mr. Huckleberry, and I know you've already addressed this, but I'd like to hear it again, has Mr. Huckleberry been paid any severance pay?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, Mr. Huckleberry has not been paid any severance pay.
Is Mr. Huckleberry currently, or are there any future plans to engage Mr. Huckleberry as a paid consultant?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, Mr. Huckleberry is not, nor are there any plans to engage Mr. Huckleberry as a consultant.
Is Mr. Huckleberry able to be engaged at any time as a paid consultant?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, from a legal perspective, from an intellectual or health perspective, I don't know the answer, I mean, which, how you were trying to answer that question.
At any point in the future, regardless of the circumstances, would Mr. Huckleberry be considered as a candidate to be a paid consultant?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, not while I'm county administrator.
Will the Board of Supervisors be notified beforehand if Mr. Huckleberry is to be engaged as a paid consultant? It appears you just answered that.
Yes, sir. Or no, sir.
You're going to produce this for us, but just to clarify, who signed off on Mr. Huckleberry's PAF and from what department?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, the PAF was signed by his boss, the chairman of the board, Sharon Bronson.
So Madam Chair signed off on the PAF for Mr. Huckleberry?
Correct.
And when was that?
April 8th, 2022.
April 8th, 22. And I think you've addressed this issue at this particular point in time, Mr. Huckleberry is not a consultant?
No, sir, he is not.
Okay. And notwithstanding Mr. Huckleberry, but practically any administrative employee with Pima County, what is the protocol process for a resignation slash retirement slash termination of county employees? Does it go to HR, then payroll, then this, or is it starting from the manager of the employee?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, that can sometimes change depending upon the position and the type of position classified and classified, et cetera. If I may, I'm going to ask our HR director to speak to that, Kathy Bowen.
So good afternoon, Chair Bronson and members of the board. Typically, an employee will submit their resignation to their supervisor, it gets signed off by the appointing authority, and then the appointing authority designates somebody to complete the PAF.
And it eventually reaches your desk?
As Chair Bronson, members of the board, they do not always reach my desk. They would for my department, but for other departments, not so.
Would you have any opportunity to view the termination slash resignation, or whatever it is, at any point, or is it just a matter of processing?
Chair Bronson and members of the board, it's just a matter of processing. So again, it would come across my desk if it was somebody in my department, but not for other departments.
And for other departments, whose desk would that cross?
It depends on who the appointing authority is.
Is there more than one desk that it would, depending on the department, I mean, is it like a lot of opportunities for it, or just one or two offices that might have their hands touch this?
Definitely Human Resources would, because we would finally receive the final PAF, and we would put it into the system, but that doesn't mean that it would cross anybody's desk other than HR records.
So basically, HR and payroll?
I do not believe that paperwork would go through payroll.
But it would, HR?
HR would put it into the system, and then payroll would be able to see something in the system and then process it from there on out.
Okay, thank you. We talked about it one other time, and I'm still unclear about it. With Mr. Huckleberry's situation, who did he work for, Pima County or the Board of Supervisors?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, again, I would ask the lawyers for a technicality on this. I believe we all work for Pima County, and we are supervised. We each have an individual who, to whom we report, but we all work for Pima County. Can that be accurate?
Yes, that is accurate.
Okay, who do we answer to?
We all, the voters and/or the taxpayers of Pima County.
Well, that would be the board, but as far as the administration at your area, you worked for the board?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, yes, I work for the board.
So then Mr. Huckleberry would have worked for the board?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Who is responsible, who is the responsible department? I think we covered that of implementing, who was the responsible party or department for implementing the terms of Mr. Huckleberry's final contract?
I think he means the one that, when we had the new board that went into effect.
And who is ensuring-
Who made sure that the contract was completed as written and generated, and who had the final overview of all of the terms?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I believe it would be the board.
It is the board.
Right.
I never did see any of that.
Well, you saw his contract.
I saw his contract, but not the final termination or the PAF.
No, well, you're getting the PAF.
Okay, I'm getting the, but I hadn't gotten it before, so.
Okay.
And here's some kind of overall generic questions. Is there any unfinished business lingering out there between Pima County and Mr. Huckleberry in any way, shape, manner, or form? In other words, we're not going to get any more blind sightings, surprises? Is there anything out there unresolved?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I do not believe so, but I'm going to turn very quickly to our HR director and the finance director, just to get their affirmation of whether they believe that everything, to answer your question, is anything else remaining? And both the finance director and the head of HR have indicated there is nothing pending of which they are aware.
That they are aware, and with, can you say that with full confidence and assurance?
We do not believe there is anything pending related to every aspect of Mr. Huckleberry's contract and employment with Pima County.
And the acknowledgement from the chair to Mr. Huckleberry that was dated April 7th, and then our office received it yesterday about 4:00, would that have been ever released if I hadn't have put this issue on the agenda?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, it is a letter from the chair. I might, I don't know in what context we would have released that, but it is now, it has been, you've requested it, it is a public document.
Now, April 7th to May 17th is six weeks, and this issue has been percolating out there. It just seems that it's, I can't even say coincidental, that it's released, it hasn't been released up until now. So my question is, what prompted that release?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, you placed an agenda item today, asked whether or not Mr. Huckleberry had received severance pay. I was given a copy of this letter that indicates, that includes the language that says additionally, due to your voluntary resignation, your contract provides that you are not entitled to severance pay. So this letter was provided to me, provided to you in response to that agenda item.
I see. So it was in response to me putting it on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
And I think we've kind of defined the clarification of item 6 of Mr. Huckleberry's contract under severance. Mr. Huckleberry was not removed by the Board of Supervisors without cause, and the Board of Supervisors did not request Mr. Huckleberry's resignation. Mr. Huckleberry tendered and offered his resignation. And you're telling me that under those conditions, Mr. Huckleberry is not entitled to any severance pay?
That is correct.
And he did not receive any severance pay?
He did not receive, again, according to the contract, severance pay defined as the three-month salary and half of his benefits, et cetera, he did not receive that.
And we have also ascertained that his status as a quote-unquote "employee" no longer exists and is not impacted by this lack of severance.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, that is correct.
Let me just make sure. Well, I thank you very much for answering my questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Moving on.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor-
I know, Ms. Lesher, you've indicated that you were not, you're not going to bring Mr. Huckleberry back as a consultant or under any kind of contract, but legally, the county could, correct? I mean, he could legally be, like, if there isn't, if we need a consultant on an issue that we need some historical perspective, or whatever, I mean, we could. You could let us know that that's going to happen, but we could legally do that.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Grohba, I would ask the lawyers, I believe that legally you could.
Sure, okay. I just, I hope that this kind of puts to bed the issue, because it seems to have come up in pretty much every agenda since, every agenda for the last four. And so I'm hoping that we can sort of put this issue to bed. I'm sure the rest of the staff agree. Thanks.
Madam Chair, I'd just say thank you, Supervisor Grohba, for joining in this conversation.
All right. Let's move on to item 12, COVID-19 premium payments. Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a series of questions much like the previous issue. First and foremost, to lead off, Joanne Filippano sent you, to the clerk of the board, a three-page comment letter, much of it dealing with what we've been discussing in the last agenda item, but it goes into the COVID premium payments. And there is an unresponsiveness to a final question from the clerk of the board, and I would imagine this would have to come through the county attorney. It states, "In conclusion, the question I now respectfully ask is why was the April 7th, 2021, lecher memo withheld as a county response to my April 21st, 22, public records requests, issue number two?" And issue number two is addressed to finance and risk management, has no responsive documents on, let's see, "The problem with this response is I did not exclusively address my public records requests. Furthermore, inasmuch as Ms. Lesher sat in the boardroom over the course of the past nine months and heard me question the supervisors multiple times as why and how these bonuses were rewarded, Ms. Lesher never mentioned in the April 7th memo to Mr. Huckleberry, nor its context providing the justification and criteria for the business." Apparently, and I'll get to the similar questions in a moment, there was a question asked by Ms. Filippano that was not answered. Are you familiar with that request?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I know she has made many requests. I'm not familiar with that one.
And at this point, you're basically prepared to say that you inadvertently maybe overlooked it or didn't realize it was a question, or it wasn't on purpose?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I did not respond to those, there's a group of people and individuals who respond to those public records requests. I did not make a decision to either submit or withhold a document, and that's part of what some of the other discussions that you have been looking at, and we've been providing information about our entire public records request process to make sure that we are getting to the public any document they request, and that we're getting those out in a timely fashion.
Okay, so just to set the table, and I know you've referred to it before, could you explain the county's ability and its authorization to pay COVID-19 premium payments?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, yes, under the American Rescue Plan Act, there is an ability to provide additional pay to workers who are needed to maintain the continuity of operations with the essential critical infrastructure during the pandemic. And I was reviewing, again, we have provided such, individuals received such pay in 37 different departments throughout the county during the time of the pandemic.
So this authorization comes from the COVID Payment Acts and-
Yes, it does.
Okay. So what criteria were used to determine which employees would be eligible for COVID premium payments?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, when you look at what occurred over a two-year period for the 37 departments, a variety of criteria was used, whether they were the individuals who were taking temperatures, if you recall back in the early days in '20 and '21, were they individuals working in the Health Department? The individuals that I believe you're speaking to that were in the memo that has been questioned recently were individuals that were part of central administration. And what we looked at at that time is that, if you recall, back in the early days of the pandemic, we were creating new HR policies almost on a weekly basis. There were different payroll processes that were occurring. There was a period of time in which I believe there were weekly reports that were required in order for an individual to telecommute, and that the way that all of those processes and policies were being reviewed and approved by the county administrator was by the act of participation of a team of individuals that were meeting every evening and through the weekend during that, during those days, to ensure that we were adhering to the policies. For example, as we began to ramp up telecommuting policies, a form was required weekly. We also had IT staff that were standing on a curb and helping people get their systems upgraded so that they could use a laptop to continue to telecommute. So of the 37 different departments over the several years, there were different reasons provided. My concern and the recommendations that I made to the county administrator relate to those who were dealing with the HR policies and the daily changes almost, the payroll that was going into ensuring the different kinds of pay and the accommodations that needed to be made in each one of the payroll systems when that occurred, as well as ensuring that, while, if you remember in those early days, I believe it was $197 million the county received, ensuring that we had all the right kinds of processes in place, that those grants were being monitored, and that each dollar was accounted for, and that we had then the telecommuting needs in place.
And then what criteria were used to determine the amounts of money each employee received? They vary, obviously.
They do vary. Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, the individuals with whom I made initial recommendations were some of the department directors, and I looked at the maximum amount. I worked with each of the directors to identify others within their departments who had been participating within this activity. When I looked at the department directors, they were the ones that were in the building every Saturday and Sunday and evening for some period of time. Some of their staff were there part of those time, part of the time, or were participating in perhaps a payroll function as related to a telecommuting function. And so that's how they were determined.
So this leads, this is involved my next question, and it appears that it was you who directed and authorized the amounts?
It was my recommendation to the county administrator for those amounts.
So my question is implicitly, who directed and authorized the amounts of money to be paid to the respective employees?
These were my recommendations based on my conversations with the department directors.
But the final authorization?
My recommendation was to Mr. Huckleberry for his approval based on my recommendations.
And he had the ultimate say in it?
And these, again, for this batch of the ultimately $1.4 million in a variety of additional COVID premium pays that was, that were paid.
And was this COVID incentive payment action ever brought before the Board of Supervisors?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, no, it was not.
Did it have to be?
No, sir, it did not.
And if this didn't have to be, then why was the Employee Vaccine Incentive Payment Plan brought before the Board of Supervisors for approval, and this premium payment incentive plan was not? Would it not have been good and consistent policy to bring both plans before the board?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I don't know what happened at that time in recommendations. I can go back and review documents that Mr. Huckleberry brought to you at the time, but I do not recall what was his belief or decision about what would come to the board and not over a year ago.
So Mr. Huckleberry had the ultimate decision on whether or not to bring these items to the board?
It was his decision to do so as the county administrator.
Yeah, but do you see that there could be some confusion as to why the COVID premium policy was not brought, but the Employee Vaccine Incentive Plan was brought to the board?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I see a distinction in those, but a recognition, and I think that one dealt with an overall policy governing every single employee, that all of the different levels of premium pay and all of that, I don't believe came back to the board. Again, this happened over the period of the last several years. Happy to do the analysis of each of that in return to you.
Do you think in future issues such as this, it would be wise to bring them before the board?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I think that one of the things that we have attempted to do in the last several months is make sure that the board has complete and total awareness of all of the actions taken, and that we are totally transparent and continue to post not only the memorandum that we're sharing with you, but that we're, then hopefully getting them back up on the website for all the public to see in a timely basis.
And in your May 10th, 2022 memorandum to the Board of Supervisors entitled "Premium Pay," you state, "The board has been asked questions about the COVID premium pay provided to some employees in central administration. Attached, please find the memorandum recommending such pay for 19 employees, which was approved April 21." So to clarify again, who approved this COVID payment policy?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, Mr. Huckleberry approved that.
So it couldn't be construed, obviously, that it was not approved to the Board of Supervisors because it never came to the Board of Supervisors, but Mr. Huckleberry approved it?
Approved it.
Have there ever been any other employees over and above these 19 employees who have received similar incentive payments since the pandemic was declared?
Again, Supervisor Christie, individuals from 37 different departments have received a total of $1.3 million. So yes.
And the Essential Workers Payment Plan, that came before the board, correct?
That, yes, sir.
And are any of these 19 employees who received the COVID-19 premium payments part of, or are members of the quote "closely held" number of staff that you refer to in your April 15th memorandum entitled "County Attorney Retirement and Resignation Records"? Are any of these recipients part of those closely held employees that you referred to that Mr. Huckleberry wanted that certain information closely held?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I believe so, but I don't know which ones. There are individuals who received premium pay related to the pandemic that may have, maybe, may work with payroll, and so they may be some of the individuals who were involved. I do not know all of the individuals who were involved in working with Mr. Huckleberry and the final days of his contract to know a complete and total crosswalk with who received these dollars.
Do, obviously, you could see that there would be some kind of raising of eyebrows, seeing that these 19 closely held individuals were recipients of the COVID premium payment? Was that probably a good call?
Are you, he's not finished yet?
Just got a, only about 20 or 30 more questions, Rex.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, there was, individuals were paid, premium pay for their work related to the pandemic, and in all of the work that we did related to the pandemic over a year ago. If some of those individuals were in personnel positions or in positions within the county, that meant that they may also have been participating in, or may have been aware in the paperwork related to the termination of Mr. Huckleberry, that has occurred. Whether people choose to draw inappropriate or incorrect conclusions, I can't speak to that.
Well, my last question basically is, the problems with the optics with this payment and incentive plan, Pima County taxpayers lost their jobs, their livelihoods, lost their businesses, disrupted their children's schools and their education during this pandemic, and the 19 county employees, some receiving up to and over $5,000, never missed a paycheck and never lost their jobs. And to add insult to injury, taxpayers funded those incentive bonuses that these employees received that were over and above their already taxpayer-funded salaries. And I think this is the very real issue and the root of the- salaries. And I think this is the very real issue and the root of the whole controversy, and I think that needs to be highlighted and underscored. And with that, Madam Chair, that concludes my questions.
And I'm just, want to note that the Board of Supervisors approved the COVID-19 premium pay on April 9th, 2020. It was a 4-1 vote, with Supervisor Miller voting nay. Supervisor Scott?
Could I see that? What was that? I never received anything like that. What's that from?
The clerk, I think.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, it's in the minutes of April 9th, 2020.
So, it was brought before the board?
Yes, by Mr. Huckleberry.
I stand corrected. And I think Ms. Lesher does, too. Thank you.
Supervisor Scott?
Madam Chair, a quick question for Ms. Lesher. It seems that although the premium pay was authorized by the board, the previous board, as you just pointed out, that was also something that was allowed under the Federal American Rescue Plan Act, whereas the vaccine incentives were a matter of board policy, more appropriately brought before the board. Is that correct, Ms. Lesher?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Scott, yes.
Thank you. And then, you know, I very much object to the implications of Supervisor Christie's next-to-last question, because the obvious implication is that these employees who received premium pay over a 10-week period because of work that they did during the pandemic, premium pay that was authorized by the board, authorized by federal guidelines, were somehow getting that money because they were, or partly getting that money because they were part of this closely held group. And I realize that that implication has been bandied about in our community by certain people, but I don't think that it's an appropriate implication to be made by a member of the board, and I very much object to it. I think all of our employees have comported themselves with integrity, and as Supervisor Christie has said many times, there has been no question of illegal action by anybody. The other thing I would say is that the one person who could answer some of the questions that have come up over the last few weeks, we are unable to talk to because of the extent of his injuries. So, I agree with Supervisor Grohba, that I hope that these matters don't keep coming up on our agendas, especially if they're going to be used as a way to imply unethical behavior by our employees.
Thank you, Supervisor Scott, and thank you, Supervisor Grohba. All right. If there's no further discussion on this item, we'll move on to Items 15 through 18, Community and Workforce Development, County Attorney Procurement and Transportation. Does anybody wish to divide the question? Okay, then I will move Items 15, 16, 17, and 18.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing no objection. Motion carries 4-0. Supervisor Heinz has, is no longer, I don't want to say it that way. I was going to say is no longer with us.
He's left the building.
He's no longer at his seat at the dais. And if there are no further, there's no further business before the board today, this meeting stands adjourned, and we will see you on June 7th.
Happy birthday, Melissa.
Happy birthday, Melissa. Yeah, we didn't get any cupcakes for her. I'm so sorry about that.